Alrighty, we will now, uh, we already opened our meeting as we had an executive session this morning for performance evaluation of a public employee that started at eight forty-five and ended at nine o'clock. So right now, we will call, uh, the regular meeting to order. Let the record show all three commissioners are present and we will start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
And I'll second.
Did we?
Did you want to add anything?
Well, that's kind of what I want to look at.
Oh.
I don't see it here, but.
Never mind. So the agenda is now below the minutes. Um, if you wouldn't mind, Commissioners, all are a friendly amendment to add two add-ons, uh, the memorandum of early holiday closure under new business at eleven thirty, and a discussion of the meeting minutes for December fifth.
Yes, I'll second.
All right, that makes more sense to me. I'm like, wait a minute, there's something missing. Um, any discussion on those? All right, hearing none, all is in favor of approval of the business agenda with two add-ons, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November twenty-eighth as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the meeting minutes from the twenty-eighth, uh, of November. Any discussion on those?
Aye.
Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, next item of business is a public comment. Um, at the start of your comment, please give your name and general location in the county for the record. Uh, you will have three minutes to speak. There's a clock on the screen if you need it. Uh, please keep your comments germane to county business. Um, and we'll open it up in the room. We do have some people in the room today, so we will start with in the room before we go online. Does anybody in the room have comments for the Board of Commissioners today? Seeing no hands, so we will go online. Zoom land, do any of you have public comments for the Board of Commissioners today? And I haven't logged into Zoom.
Sherry.
Sherry, go ahead. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, it's a rainy day over here in White Salmon area. I was just wondering, is it raining and cloudy in the Golden Dale area?
Yes.
Yes. So how well is solar working right now? I think we all need to ask ourselves that. As we live in this, this part of the country, we're not in Arizona. We have a lot of clouds and a lot of rain, so I just think that people need to start a- asking common sense questions before we give up our farmlands or well, give up the ability to grow food for generations to come in this area and how we can protect the future of the land for the generations to come. So I just wanted to bring that up as a common sense question as solar is wanting to cover thousands, tens of thousands of acres of land that could be used for farming in the generation. And then the common sense is, can you really get rid of it? Is the land really restorable once that goes in? I, I'm not sure if you ever could bring it back to a great productive agricultural land after something like that is installed and then supposedly removed. And also, um, you know, the corporation thing, I'm still trying to figure out how a governmental entity, which became the RFA out here, became a political subdivision as well as a municipal corporation, becoming two legal entities operating under one entity. Um, it's confusing to the average people out here that aren't part of the so-called government corporation. How an entity can, one entity can operate in two capacities? And I, you know, I don't know if anybody can actually explain that to me because I don't know if I can operate in two capacities. Maybe I can. Maybe I can be public and maybe I can be private. Hopefully I can figure that out. And, um, that basically, that's all I have to say. I just want to keep the conversations going with you three people, you, you know, live people up there that are supposed to protect this county. And, um, I appreciate the gold fringed flag that you have put into the screen. I wonder why it's gold fringed. So have a good day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherry. Uh, we'll go back in the room. Does anybody else in the room have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today?
Here's zero zero eight eight.
I'm not seeing it. We'll go online, zero zero eight eight. You've unmuted yourself.
Yes, Elmer Eldred, Goldendale. Yeah, I'd like to comment on some of the, uh, things that you guys comment on. Is, uh, you, you say that Greg is bringing up disinformation and, uh, that, uh, it's not factual, but you know, you know, he gets, I mean, you complain about public information requests and that's where he gets these information on these taxes and stuff. It's from the public re- uh, information request that he puts in. So are you saying that the, uh, county is putting out fraudulent public information? And then also the, uh, fact that there is not any, uh, turbine wind generators that are not being re-refitted with the larger blades and they're even, Simon's even extending the towers because of the larger blades. Because to get the mu- what they get the most amount of efficiency out of is the longer blades and the taller towers, but also the main fact is according to, uh, Internal Revenue Service, when they spend enough money, uh, repowering needs, it's a brand-new project again and all their, uh, subsidy and payments from the government start over. So you, you know, I don't know, there's probably Department of Energy, there's, uh, Climate Dispatch, Climate Change, uh, RE Global. I mean, you can go on Simon's own, uh, website. You can go on and see this for a fact. So when you state that these are projects are not being extended or expanded, then apparently you haven't read or don't know, or you're just getting your information from the people that are doing the projects. And that, uh, you know, that's where, uh, I don't think they're going to admit to, uh, they're, they're re- completely redoing the project and have you redo all the, uh, applications, certifications, tax structure. And, uh, so, you know, the thing is, is that before you make a comment, you should make sure what you're commenting about because I don't think you know exactly what is involved in repowering the, uh, wind turbines. And also, when you state that, when Greg comes up and he says, he quotes at RCW, where you can find it, the number and everything. And then you say, well, you gotta look at whack. Which whack are you talking about? I mean, you generalize that he's wrong and you don't even know which whack you're even talking about. That, uh, and I can't find one that supersedes the RCW that he brought up. And I guess the thing is, is that, you know, when you guys make comments at the end, uh, it would be nice if you actually knew what you're talking about.
Expired, sir. We appreciate your comments. Please continue with it next week. Uh, we'll go back in the room for citizen comment. Everybody have a citizen comment? Okay, we will go back online. Does anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Being none, we are at forty-four employees today. That's up about ten, or sorry, participants.
Was an assumption.
I was assuming there was a lot of employees on. All right, anybody online, citizen comment? Going once. We'll stall on that and go back to the room. Anybody in the room, citizen comment, last chance? Seeing none, we'll go back online, last chance, citizen comment. Um, if anybody online has a citizen comment, wants to give it today, now is your time to do so before we close citizen comment. Going once. Going twice. I'm not seeing it. With that, we will close citizen comment and I will open the floor to my seatmates if they have any responses.
Sure, um. Sherry, thanks for calling in. It is wet and sappy here too. Um, and I think it remains to be seen through, uh, the projects and tracking what solar we have online already, what their production is with the type of weather we have in the Pacific Northwest. And there's a lot of modeling and different maps through, uh, the WSU studies that show some of that already, what the projections are for that. So we do have some documentation to go by. Um, the corporation thing is very confusing and it's a very deep subject. And what I can tell you as, as commissioners, we have to wear different hats. And several times we'll step down out of one position and start thinking and working in another position because it depends on which subject, which money, and how that's ran, and how we have to work with it and what regulations and rules go that with that. So to track all of that and the jobs that we do, it is very confusing. Um, even as far as being a member of the Board of Health, we have to step down as county commissioners and step up as a member of the Board of Health. So it changes everything in our working order. So you're looking at a very, very big package that you're working your way through. Um, and Mr. Eldridge, um, it is a change to move into the repowering, refitting. Um, I've sat down with the solar or with the wind power, uh, corporation and started gaining education and figuring out which way do we go with this now. Uh, it isn't a set process yet, but we're moving into it. Um, and they've been very forthcoming and very helpful about, um, looking at how we approach this and how we handle it and how we move through it and get those functioning again. So we're, it's, it's not off our radar. Uh, we are working on it. But thank you.
Mr. Anderson, do you have anything?
Sure. Let me go back to it. Sherry, uh, it is rainy here in Golden Dale and just for your knowledge, um, uh, living in White Salmon, there's a hundred and twenty-four average rainy days in White Salmon a year. There are ninety rainy days in Golden Dale and eighty-three rainy days a year in Bickleton, which I was surprised at because it seems like Bickleton never gets much rain. But that's according to just a quick Google search on the number of rainy, um, and then you can assume from that, uh, sunny days out of the year. Um, thank you, um, Commissioners, all are for, um, helping to clarify, um, that we do sit on many different, um, uh, boards, committees, as well as multiple, um, public corporations. Uh, you as well can, uh, also be on multiple corporations. You just need to be, um, an owner of a corporation and you could have many different ones there, Sherry. Um, and as for Mr. Eldred, I think, um, what the board was getting at with regards to, um, you can bring up RCWs, but your RCW, that's, that's the law. And then there's the rulemaking process. So, uh, rulemaking does not supersede law. Um, the law i- is what is written and then, um, state agencies go through the rulemaking process, which is where you get the Washington Administrative Code. And in order, um, uh, to, to understand how the, the whole program works, you can't just look at the law. There's also how it gets interpreted and as well as how it gets administrated. And that's what the, the board was trying to, um, uh, help understand there. And as you say, um, someone can put a lot of time and effort and research into a, a public comment and they expect to have a response right then and there, uh, without giving us the time and effort to respond. And I think that is where Commissioner Christopher was going with some of the policies and procedures that recommend that we do not respond to public comments because then we get put on, uh, when we get put on the, um, put on the stage and expected to know everything at all times, um, that can create an issue. And so I would, um, uh, respectfully, um, understand where Commissioner Christopher was coming with that. Um, in terms of the repowering, um, I know from my own, um, previous comments, my point was the repowering is that repowering helps reset the taxes that we receive because as those tax revenues go down, uh, when they repower, then it bumps that back up and then just as as if in your own personal property, if you were to rebuild your house or, um, uh, buy new, uh, equipment for your business, that resets that cost. And then it starts depreciating again. So the repowering is actually good for the citizens of Click Attack County because it helps keep our, um, taxes lower on the whole. And with that, I would also remind everyone that we have some of the lowest taxes in Washington State here in the county.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um. As Commissioner Anderson said, I don't think it's wise to respond to public comment if you're having to come up with answers out of the back of your head because you could be off one dollar and be giving bad information. I think we need to be very guarded on our responses. Um, to make sure we are responding, but in a thoughtful way that if there's anything that we probably shouldn't be responding into until we go look up the information, that would be a much wiser choice. Uh, with that, I will quickly say that for Sherry, for, you know, solar not working on a cloudy day, um, that's a great question. Um, it's not a question that county government has any, uh, say-so in, so we don't have any studies or surveys or any of that kind of stuff. Uh, now, if I was a solar corporation, I would probably hire the smartest, most brilliant minds in, um, weather. Uh, I would have them put out solar panels, uh, test panels on land I was thinking about leasing. Um, and I would see how much sun, uh, or power is produced over the course of a year on a test panel uh, before I bought leased land. So, um, I don't know for sure that the solar companies have done that. I can tell you, I see a lot of test solar panels around my area. Um, so you might want to reach out to those companies and see if they do studies to determine, uh, whether they're wasting their money or not, uh, before they build the projects, but that is not a, a government, um, thing. Um, and that's all I have. So with that, we will move on to Treasurer Greg Gallagher Finance Committee update. And I see you brought your partner. You can bring her to the bench too, if you want.
Sure to make sure I'm keeping it all straight.
Microphone on, sir, green.
Good morning, I'm, I'm green. Yes, I'll pull it a little closer. How's that?
Yep.
Um, so just an update on the, uh, Finance Committee meeting that we had on the fifteenth, which was last Friday, um, which will be the last one that we'll have this year. Um, we talked about, uh, public records request dollars. So for, uh, monies that we're collecting, where do we code that to? Um, the decision was to put it into the auditor non-departmental budget with a bars number that will be set up so that we'll be able to track that. So, um, that was, that's in the works of trying to get that going. I don't believe the bars number's set up yet, but I think that's in the coming weeks to get done. Um, we had a discussion about local REIT, which came up. I brought that to the group. Um, there has been some confusion as to the dollars. I'm gonna, this is kind of a long, uh, piece, so I'll try to put together as Reader's Digest as possible, but when we changed the, uh, or when the county implemented the sales tax, there is a quarter percent rate that was taken off because we had the quarter percent in lieu of the additional sales tax. When that happened, um, that money needed to go to capital. That money got split at the time, um, which in going back and reading minute, minute, reading minutes of meetings and looking at different pieces, it looks to be that the decision was to do, to put it to Fund Three O Three, which is capital and Fund Three O Six, which is the radio project. Um, and I believe it was for doing the SADIS radio project. Um, the the, where the project is done, um, the confusion was whether that was just going all the capital or all not. Um, so I brought that to the Finance Committee to kind of noodle through all the pieces if anybody had a different idea of how that was. Didn't really seem so. We had a discussion about where the money's going. Um, the Finance Committee had a proposal essentially that probably moot, having the board make a motion or, or somehow, uh, identifying a way to move that money so that it's directed to Fund Three O Three, which is capital because there are no radio projects currently going. That would be money that would be just sitting in there. Um, I, I believe that when that happened, that was there. This is a conversation that's for the board. This is not, you know, we just had it in the Finance Committee meeting first because we have the auditor, the treasurer, the budget, all the folks there to be able to have a discussion about all the pieces. Um, so, uh, in, in during our discussion, that was kind of where we got to. Again, this is a proposal or a, or a recommendation to the board, I guess, lack of different. This would take a board motion, I believe, in order to figure out where we want this to go forward. Um, currently, again, the money is going half of it to Fund Three O Three, which is the capital budget, which Public Works has, and the other one is Fund Three O Six, which is the radio project. Um, and so, um.
Take the question in there since you're positive?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is the long-term plan to keep Three O Six open?
Um, I don't know that we really talked. I, I, I guess that would be a conversation for the, the folks that are doing those things. I think the question, the con- some of the conversations, that's where I was trying to kind of figure out, how do I take? One of the conversations that happened in the Finance Committee meeting was whether do we have the radio project capital pieces go through the regular capital project method, just like we have set up where they get on a list and they get categorized in. It seems a little bit, I think the concern or the Finance Committee's just most discussion was that we want to put the money where the money's going to be needed. It doesn't seem like putting money into a fund that we're not going to use forever or however, made a lot of sense to just park it in different places. So that's kind of how we got to the discussion or to the decision of the Fund Three O Three and then like you said, putting those projects, if there were capital projects, putting those into Fund Three O Three and having them filter through. Public Works has a, I don't know how many year, but I would, I don't want to, I just know they have a big, long list of how they go through and they worked that. It comes through the budget. But during the budgeting season, it's very open. So that was kind of the discussion. Um, we do create new capital funds for specific projects. Um, so like when we built this building, we have a fund specifically for that. I think the recommendation from the Finance Committee is, is if we were to go out and rebuild another SADIS, that we should have a a capital fund specifically for that project. Um, and then close those at the end, but for just little, and that they're not little, but they're larger than, you know, those medium-sized ones that have a need, putting them into the Fund Three O Three, just like any other project that gets worked on. Um, so that was, does that answer your que- I mean, is that kind of, that's kind of where I was headed. Um, so currently in talking to Public Works, there is about sixty-two thousand dollars remaining. Um, the November, I look at cash balances on a monthly basis, so the last cash balance I have is November thirtieth, so until we get to the end of December. So the December, the November thirtieth cash balance was eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. I don't know what's pending for that in December. Um, so if you take off the sixty-two thousand, whether that's what's going to come over next or however, when we get to the end, I kind of really think for me as the treasurer and the one who is ensuring that the, because these monies come in on REIT when, during the REIT process and get split out at the time. So I think I'm looking for a little direction, like are, do we like where it's going? Do we want to keep it there? Do we want to? And that's kind of why I brought this to the Finance Committee to try to get a group of folks to say, okay, where do we go? But ultimately, this is a, I mean, obviously to come here and have this conversation with you guys that, um, this is a decision that the board would need to make. Do we continue the way it is? The conversation that we did have was making this change effective January one of twenty-twenty-four. That seemed like a nice time to have that. Um, but, uh, again, that's, this is a board decision. I want to make sure we understand that. This is not something that the, we can have a proposal and we can all noodle together, but this is something that and it may take more than one meeting. Maybe there's some pieces, but those are the pieces that I've got. Last year, or so far in twenty-twenty-three, the REIT dollars is about three hundred thousand maybe-ish in total, by the way, in total, so that gets split. So, um, and, and let's remember that it's, it's hard because it's skewed in twenty-twenty-two because we had the SDS transaction that went through. But then there was a refund on some of that for, for the DOR. So I, I, I mean, when you're looking at the dollars, there's, it, it, and it can fluctuate. It depends on the, you know, transactions. I mean, it kind of peaked for a while. It's kind of gone down a little bit from what it was. Um, but traditionally, I think those dollars have been used to fund the capital projects for the county, um, in, in whichever bucket. So yes, so. Is there any?
I would also add that I would think that there's a pretty good potential. If we do decide, which I am in favor of, um, making a motion, because that's the way I thought it was, but there's some confusion. So this would be declared up that we were going to put all of the REIT in the Three O Three. Once SADIS was done, kind of be done with that fund. If we have more radio towers to do in the future, potentially go to bond or something to do those towers. Um, and then make the change on January first. Um, to put all those funds in there. So I guess at some point today, and I would rather sooner than later, I would like to, uh, make a motion to get that done, but I want to make sure if you guys have questions, um, that staff is, the entire finance is here to answer those questions now or they may not be in a half an hour.
Right. Do you have questions? Go ahead.
I just think it's always a good idea to have the conversation with the director who manages the radio towers before we make a motion.
And, and that's your guys', and that's your guys' thing. I, I think our, our piece is, we understand that. I, I think so far, a lot of the projects from the finance side and then looking at them is a lot of those projects are getting, whether they're coming out of Three O Six or they're coming out of Three O Three, essentially, if you looked at the, um, the SADIS, um, it, it's getting built. It's just what, what bucket they're coming out of. So again, that's how, and, and that is the, we just, this has been a question that was brought to, I'm the one who puts the computer in there that says split it fifty-fifty or put it a hundred percent. I, I, I need some direction. It's not my decision. It's your guys' decision. So we took it to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee, upon a lot of discussion, decided or had a proposal that we thought this would be the best, but again, that's our, the decision of that sub, I mean, we're, we're not, it's, we're bringing it here to you guys. So if there's other pieces that you, and, and, and I guess then the other part would be, you know, in order to do that on January, that would be, we're kind of running down. So if there's more information that we need to put together or more discussion, we can do that. I, I guess that's, that's your, that's your guys' discussion.
Okay, so if, um, I guess you want to hear from him now, or do you want to hear from the director when he does his update in an hour?
I'm fine when he gives his regular update and then if we make a motion, we could do that this afternoon.
Great. So i- if there's other additional information that the board would like, if you'd let me know, we can go through and put some more discussion together. We can have discussion with the auditor. We can, we could have another meeting if we needed to have another discussion. We don't currently have one planned. Um, but that's kind of where we were. So that's, that's a lot of the, that was a large portion of the meeting. We were, um, and we did have it on Friday, so we were trying to make sure we were short and timely to try to make sure people had time to travel to the, um, west end of the county. Um, let's see. And that's the way, by the way, and just to make sure that, that was changed that way since twenty-twenty-two. So April one of twenty-twenty-two, it's been split out this way. Um, the DNR Pilte had a question for weed assessment. Um, that came up during the meeting. That's been fulfilled. The assessor and the treasurer have taken care of that. Um, with Billy Mean knew there were some questions on what we did, but, but that's been handed over to them. Um, there was a discussion about oh-nine dollars. A question came up about oh-nine dollars in ports. Um, I, I was asked about it. There was a question in the Treasurers Association about oh-nine dollars in ports and the question was And the question was whether the county could, I I couldn't remember what it was. And upon checking, it was at Franklin County. And um, I think they were wanting to um do bonds against future revenues of the oh nine dollars. That was that what that couldn't happen. So it really had nothing to do with that with anything of relevance per se of how they do it. The auditor had some thoughts about something that came up. And um, in the conversation, it sounds like the oh nine dollars that uh in her organization that was being talked about wasn't, it was actually COVID dollars because we've been dealing with a lot of COVID money. So there was an odd issue about some COVID COVID money that somebody, some county, because I mean, again, as a treasure association or auditors, I mean, there's a lot of discussion with different folks of where things are at. So that's what, that's what Commissioner or uh Auditor Joby had recalled. We talked about year end. Uh, I think from the whole entire crew, I think we're very pleased with where we're at right now. And trying to get all the urinating activities done with journal entries and everything else. Um, and we are, um, we feel like we're in a really good place going into the last two years. And uh, that's a credit to all the offices working together, all the teams of folks. Nicole in the auditor's office, Stephanie in my office, Heather and I, Jen, I'm going to leave somebody out. But I mean, there's a lot of folks, uh, the health department, all the, all the folks out there were really working hard. And I think that it's um, it's a good thing. And I want to make sure we bring that up because um it's, it's nice to be at this stage where we're, things are moving. And and again, we have a tall mountain in front of us because we, you know, close and do all the annual reporting and everything else. But it's nice to be where we are at this time of the year. Staff and elected reports. Jen reported that the last supplemental is coming along and um. Commissioner Christopher, the auditor, myself, we didn't have any real updates. I'd like to thank Mr. Christopher for his time on the finance committee. I know we've had some crazy scheduling this year of trying to get things done. But um, we've been able to end the year really in a good spot and trying to get there. So I really do appreciate, as I appreciate all commissioners. I think it's really hopeful um keeping us moving and having good discussion about trying to get these kinds of things moved along and get all the folks in there. So I appreciate Commissioner Christopher's time on the committee. Um, the next meeting is January nineteenth. So once the board chooses the new chair, I will send an invite for that. But uh, I just haven't done that yet. So we'll send that, set that up at the new year. That was the um that's the report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to talk about or answer.
No questions?
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You've made it a very good year for us with financial information.
A lot. It's a team effort. Let me tell you.
It's, it's a good group because it gets to fix processes and clean up issues. So moving on.
Are there any issues with the consent agenda from my seat means?
I kind of have a small question. I mean, that I kind of already know the answer to. Number eleven on the consent was deeming public works vehicles surplus that are graders. And I kind of want to know where they're going or how that works, but it doesn't necessarily mean I don't want to deem them surplus either. So I don't know if you want to do it separately or just hold the consent agenda until after we hear from Public Works and then we can do the whole thing as a Okay, go ahead.
So as the treasurer, one of the things that we do is we um surplus items for the county. And the county and and I'm not speaking on behalf of Public Works. I'm just speaking on behalf of the process. And so um, they have came to me and said, hey, we want to get rid of these graders that are have been around for a while. Probably we should have done. And we've been working on this for a while, but trying to figure out how to deal with. It's not a pickup. It's not a, they're kind of a unique situation. And so by going to online a couple of years ago, um, we're able to put them onto and hit a greater group of folks. But the one thing is, is that we need to do is we need them to be surplus in at the can't, we can't, we can't get rid of them and then go back. We're so we're just working through the process. So we are working to try to have a surplus auction of those items online coming up and we're putting them on to. We use um public surpluses, the web, it's the, it's the lots of counties use it. And it reaches out the concern, and I understand this from Jeff's perspective is, you know, in the past, we've had smaller, we've always done closed sealed bid at the fairgrounds. And we really don't reach out to a lot of folks. And we, these are an item that somebody in Idaho may want to send a low boy over and pick this up and they'll bid whatever. So we're trying, we can reach greater folks. There is a heavy equipment actual section in there. So that's why they're on there now as opposed to so that in working with them. That was one of the questions is, oh, we need to get them served because I don't know that they got there. Or I think that they, we all thought they were, but maybe it wasn't exactly however. So I think that's why we're just trying to check the boxes as we're going through the process. But I don't want to talk on behalf of Public Works. I'm just saying that's the process that we are.
You answered the question though. You answered the question I had, which was how are we surplusing these? And is this a sealed bid up at our lot with three people bidding?
Now, we haven't done the piece.
Kind of scenario where these going to go to a high bidder on a mass market and that's
It's going to be the market and the market will tell. I mean, we we don't know, you know, it's still an auction, so to speak, but it is online and we will. Excuse me.
Nope.
I'm good with that. Advertise. And that's how we've been doing most of the even the smaller vehicles lately. And I think we kind of weren't really sure how it was going to go. Um, but no, we have done very well on the public surplus web on the internet. So
Again, reaches more people and you get a bigger number. So I just wanted to make sure that we're going.
And there are other ways to do it. We've talked about the Richie Brothers option, which I know some folks are aware of that. It's an auction house. It does just. But by the time you ship them and pay the all the fees where this is the method that we think we're going to try with these. If it, we think it's better than the old method, if it's maybe not the, but at least this is kind of the next step. So again, that's just the treasures, public surplus side of it.
Yep. But but you answered my question. With that, I'm fine with consent agenda. If you want to move forward, if you want to wait, that's fine too.
Mister Chairman, we have before us the consent agenda with twelve items. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval consent with twelve items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
And Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the account payable warrants in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and forty four dollars and thirty five cents, ending the date of December eighteenth, twenty twenty three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the accounts payable warrants. Uh, I will note for the record that payroll benefit warrants are at zero for the same date. Uh, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, next item on our agenda is the planning department update with interim director Laurie Henderson.
So last night we had our planning commission meeting or workshop and um two and a half hours. And we got through nine pages. So don't, don't worry. Um, you know, we're halfway through chapter one of the general provisions. Now the plan is to finish chapter one in January. And then our February workshop will, and then likely have additional meetings. Um, we have the other remaining seven chapters to go through. So I I think it's safe to say the planning department desperately needs a consultant director or somebody familiar with the minimum requirements or the requirements of the critical area ordinance to meet the state regulations. Denise has been coming, oh, sorry. Denise has been coming with me to the meetings and both her and I are quite busy with our existing projects and really don't have the time to spend necessary to, you know, we're familiar with the current critical areas ordinance, but not necessarily all the new, new things that are proposed. And to to make justice of, you know, a new ordinance, we we need some help. And I don't know how else to say it. Our planning commission members are great and they're trying. But you know, eight thirty last night, we made it through nine pages and oh, and they had three emails this morning to to add to what we did. So that was great, but um, we need help. Or I don't know how to say it. Is it productive that we continue on and struggle? And if we do that, then um staff needs to spend more time on the critical areas ordinance and understanding it. And yet we're falling behind on our existing project. So don't need to whine, but don't know what to do.
I have a question. So how do you feel planning commission? Were they able to work through all the nuances and laws and help each other and come to consensus? Were there?
We all got along very well and a couple of the members actually had done quite a bit of research like Skamania County, who just adopted a new ordinance in the last, I think, six months, Yakima County, I think was within the last year or so. So they're doing some homework, but yet this is so much this ordinance as drafted is so much different than the existing. So it's hard kind of to understand.
But are they understanding? Do you feel they're gelled as a commission and working together, moving forward on their choices and sharing information and coming to understanding between each other is what I'm looking.
They're working well together. And what I had hoped, you know, when I sent out their agenda and stuff ten days, you know, a week and a half ago or so, said, hey, if you're reviewing and doing this stuff, if you have notes and comments, if I could get copies of those and share with the other members beforehand. And I think three of the members had some notes, but and I'm sure we all know how you make your own little notes and what might make sense to you may not make sense to everyone else. So we didn't share copies of anything in advance, or actually, we didn't share anything just verbally last night. So.
Was it workshops? Or was it recorded or?
It is recorded.
Okay.
It's on the cloud. I haven't found the right cloud yet. And Lord knows there's a lot of them, but I know it's out there.
Okay.
So we do have it recorded and will, but I, I don't know.
So I would be able to go back and review.
Yes, as soon as I download the right cloud. Yes, I can get that to you and stuff. So.
So I guess it seems like this is a, an issue of our own making. Because we had an ordinance and then we hired a consultant who then completely rewrote it according to a template of their own making. That was completely different than our old one. And so it makes it harder for, because I remember when Commissioner Zoller and I served on it, it makes it really difficult in order to compare and contrast when they rewrite the whole thing. And so of course, it's going to take longer to go through it when it's not simple updates. And there's no track changes to get from there to here. And so while it it saddens me, they only made it through nine pages, but that's also the beginning of it, which I, if I remember correctly, is probably the most dense portion of it. Hopefully, like the wetlands, you know, all that kind of stuff is that's in state, state law. That's what you're required to do. That stuff would go faster. I can't remember what chapter that is. Three or so. So I guess from my perspective, if we, if we still believe that that local planning and planning from the bottom up matters. The fact that the commission is going through it with a fine tooth comb and making it theirs rather than it being what a consultant has done for us. To me, that's good. Um, that's what I always wanted the planning commission to be able to do and to have the because at least when they get done, they can say, we did this, not we paid a consultant to do this. In terms of getting the help you desperately need, um, I remember it was our, our directive last time to move forward with, you know, continuing down this path and let them sink or swim on their own as the commission, which I think is still, from my perspective, a good place to be. And then um hiring a new directors top on our priority list and hopefully will be have positive news coming soon would be the goal so that you will have help in the next, within the next forty five days or so. But right now, I mean, they're doing the work. Are you, what are they expecting you to do on the back end of it?
Well, and right now, so I have some various notes from from yesterday or last night. And then some additional information this morning that the email, a couple of members emailed. So we'll put those in those first nine pages kind of as a track change and try to do that. And of course, my notes, their notes, so we'll, we'll get something out to them hopefully. Usually we do the mailings and or emailing, et cetera, you know, ten days or so in advance of the meeting. So right after the holidays, well, hopefully, well, hopefully be working on on those changes now and get something out to them. And proceed. And and I think they they did agree that chapter one, the general provisions is is the most complicated. And then it should get easier. And in the meantime, while that uh, they did come up with a couple definitions. That is chapter two. So so you know, vaguely, we're, we're moving ahead. It's just a very time consuming project. And while, well, yesterday was kind of the classic Monday, you know, spent almost three hours on the phone with different people and different projects. And then it's like, oh, Lord, I'm not having the time to to prepare for the meeting and stuff. So.
That's, that's my concern, which I haven't heard a solution by this board yet. Uh, or if it wants to make a solution to that is you falling behind in your regular tasks. So if we continue down the path that this board has chosen, we're going to have staff falling behind in their current tasks. So this board either needs to choose to have staff fall farther behind and continue the work on the C A O. Or hold off on the work on the C A O until we get a planning director or consultant that can then take the lead on that. And that allows staff to get back to their duties that they were assigned. And to not have the the smaller stuff falling through the cracks.
And I have to thank you for your due diligence and your work, but I think we also need to clarify what level of intense work or responsibility you have in this. And if you're tracking changes and disseminating information and doing the meeting minutes. I think it from me, I would like staff to understand, we're not putting that burden of all the technical work, all of those things into that document, that burden's on the planning commission. And I think they've, they've accepted that responsibility and they wanted to move forward with the document and asked to have these meetings and move forward that they felt like they could do this. We've had one meeting and yes, it was a little bit long and it took a little longer, but it was a more complicated piece. So if we can make it through to the second meeting, which is a month away, we're very close and very closer than to getting you a director for that um, for that office. And if we move in over time and um, you know, taking the burden off you to where it's guiding the planning commission to do their due diligence. Maybe that will help and you won't feel responsible to to find those technical items for them.
And then I think we do have to remember the planning commission members are volunteers too. So their their time is limited and and definitely appreciate all that they're doing. No easy answers. But that is life. Oh, so should we move on?
I think, I think, you know, um, we're probably in order for solutions based here. And to help it move quicker, I think it'd be good to to let the planning commission know like, like give me the changes that you're expected this and send them to you and you're acting as the facilitator. You're not making changes to the documents really yet. You're just saying, get them to me so I can get them out so that we can increase the pace of discussion. I know the planning commission is probably very cognizant of sending out emails at all anymore after last year's stuff. And so we just need to make sure that they feel okay with in giving them a timeframe. If you want something to be brought up on that next section, you know, from the next part of phase one, get me your ideas so that we can get that together. So everybody can see it ahead of time to do their due diligence. So we don't need to do it during the meeting going line by line. It's kind of like how we work through our procedures.
Yeah, I I would say step out of the workload as much as you can and make them do it. Step out of the workload as much as you can and make them do it. If that's the direction we're going. And then you just in charge of throwing in track changes and. Be done with it. And it sounds like that's the direction of the board and hopefully within a month, we have help for you.
Sounds good. And then we do have the three planning commission members who, um, they all mentioned, hey, are we, you know? Are we reappoint? And I said I would get back and the commissioners would probably be contacting them soon. Or making.
Yep, okay.
Appointments. Um, so.
We'll make a note, actually meant to come to your meeting last night. And then got sidetracked on a whole nother dumpster fire. So I didn't get to, but um I will have my conversation and. Um, by next week.
And not, not just these three members, but we really do need to appreciate the time they spend and.
Absolutely.
It a lot more than than just coming to a meeting. It's obviously doing their homework.
Well, part of me was thinking potentially an extension to get through this project too. Uh, before we make a change. Um, but it doesn't sound like getting through this project's going to be a quick. Couple, two, three month procedure. So.
Probably could. I think the biggest issue we have, like with these type of things, is it start stop? Because you get going, you get it in your head, you're working on it, and then you take a year off, whether it's COVID or whatever else, and then you forgot about all.
And that's.
And then you have to retrain yourself on it and it's a complete pain. If they just get in there and work on it, work on it, work on it, and then move on, that, that's usually the best course action.
And that's true because they did hold the public hearing in September of twenty twenty two. So. Then we finally had another workshop November, you know, just a month ago. So definitely a long timeframe there.
Well, and they're like us too. Um, in the past, we've been able to have workshops in between. But then that is staff and more help. So when we get to that point and we're maybe midway through this, if we need to have a midterm workshop. And you have that help, maybe they can arrange to let them have that extra workshop.
Okay. Um, requests for proposals, again, Public Works is working on that and hopefully we'll have a draft soon. James Dean, the aggregate overlay, I hope to have a C P A out later this week. It'll honestly, at this point, probably be next week. But have it out for comment before we make a determination. On the the C P A decision. Um, last week, we had two pretty serious inquiries in on. Conference of plan and zoning updates. The first was very specific to resource lands, which is a very unique zone. That doesn't really have a minimum lot size. And at one point between the, the different Houston B Z. Comp plans, there is a one point for a couple of years where you could divide into twenty acre lots and that's no longer allowed. So had a lengthy discussion on that. And then there's some citizens, some farmers, ranchers who are interested in. The extensive ag zone and raising the minimum acreage from twenty to possibly forty or eighty.
Let's say I got an email saying one sixty.
That's what I was about to bring that.
Well, and it it varied between phone conversations and a letter. And so, yes.
Uh, my answer to all of those would be they will be addressed through the planning commission when we do a comp plan update.
Right. And that's pretty much what I said.
And they can address their comments to the planning commission when we get to the comp plan update, unless the board. Wants to make an executive decision before that. Um, that was always my interpretation of where we.
Well, I mean, if you're asking about the the zoning, at any time, any member of the public can ask for. A zone change over, over a parcel or an area and that goes through its own process. I don't know if these were regarding.
These would be much larger.
Yeah, these were not regarding their parcel. They were trying to regulate somebody else's parcel.
Um, extensive ag zone in general, it covers the entire county. Um. That was kind of one of them. And the resource lands is exclusive to the Houston B Z area.
Right.
But does have quite a bit of acreage or, you know, quite an area.
Yeah.
So, um, just wanted to update you on that. And then we do have plen- pending projects, Bluebird Solar, Under Canvas. A conditional use for a coffee stand. We're waiting, um, some additional comments from. Public Works and D O T on that, because it does come off the state highway. Uh, another conditional use permit with with C P A for a doctor's office in Trout Lake. We have a rezone proposal in the Snowden area. Um, we also have the ongoing Northwestern Lake, the cabin issues. Uh, we have possibly three short plots throughout before the end of the year. And we still in the back of our mind and are getting questions every week or two about the repowering of wind projects. Um, the Port District's still working on their shoreline substantial development and conditional use. Shoreline conditional use, and that's in the Bidgeon area. And then we also have in the back of our mind our shoreline master program update. And a whole bunch of other things, but that's a day in the life of planning.
I would just like to say thank you. I know you're got a lot on your plate with this, but also your own personal life. And all of the, the many volunteer hats you wear with that. And so I hope we're not causing you too much stress. Um, especially during the holiday season and. Uh, I worry about.
Oh, well, thank you. You could join us New Year's Day, ten A M at Mary Hill State Park for the Polar Plunge. We'll come watch. And yes, people often pay to uh watch or not the plan.
Yeah.
So the the rezone, um, in Snowden, is that, um, going from forest resource to rural? Or forest resource to resource cluster?
Um, it would go from forest resource to just the rural zoning, which is a ten acre zone. And I was trying to get that neighborhood to, if you're looking at the zoning map, there's kind of a little area trying to get that whole. I think there's like six parcels, but they, they didn't. Come to that conclusion and the two landowners applied, brought in their applications Thursday or Friday.
To change subjects on you, what's happening with the Northwestern Lake cabins?
Um, we're kind of at a, I wouldn't maybe a standstill, because supposedly there were like deeds to the actual cabin.
Mm hmm.
But not necessarily the land underneath them. So then. Between the Skamania County landowners or cabin owners and. Some Clickatack County ones, they're trying to work to basically create lots around each of those cabins and. The prosecutor's office is trying to help, but I think they're running into how to do this.
Yeah.
And I know we have a statement from Kurt Drier. Gosh, now it's probably fifteen, twenty years ago that. The cabins and the land, you know. Grandfathered and we would consider them together. But we don't know how to make, you have this cabin, you have this land, how to make that an actual lot to then let.
They used to just say, oh, halfway between.
Right. And I think halfway between or, you know, the, the big rock.
Yeah.
Or, you know, it doesn't quite work.
Doesn't work in a survey as well as you'd think it would.
But they've, they've surveyed it all multiple times now.
Right. And they're trying to agree on a survey. And then I, I think there's one cabin that's in one of the counties and like the Septic Taints. In either county or, you know, something to that effect.
Oh, gosh.
We can just let Skamania County incorporate that whole thing and then we wouldn't have to worry about it.
We are. We'll, we'll, there has to be, but it has to.
The issue was, a long time ago, we also had a planned unit, P U D, planned unit development ordinance that we got rid of. Skamania County has different zoning and so we're, they're trying to make it mesh with the both where. The cabins will be owned by, the cabins on the ground underneath it will be owned by you. And then the common area will likely be owned by. A conservation organization. And so trying to make that all work is, but they'll get through it. As long as we understand that this is predates zoning by a long time.
And that's probably the hardest part because the different drawings, you know, is this, is this real or is it accurate? Or, I mean, it's real and it is accurate, but.
Now that somebody's paid for all the surveys.
Right.
Okay.
So it's interesting.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you, Laura.
Oh, thank you and have a good afternoon.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up is Public Works Director Jeff Hunter and County Engineer Sescarova.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Whenever you're ready.
Yep, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just waiting for the word.
I, I thought we were, yep.
Just waiting for the word. So, uh, consent agenda, I think got moved through. Um, we just, uh, just to clarify some stuff on, um, the. The vehicle surplus, it's vehicles that we used to trade in. And, uh, we can't trade in unless you go to bid. If you buy in the state bid, you can't trade them in. So we needed, and they were ser- they were kind of mentioned different ways. So just to clean it all up, we just made sure we got them all surplus. The new way. I mean, because we had some of them going to Richie Brothers and some of them didn't, weren't specific. So that's why we. We put that package together to clean everything up, which was consent agenda item number eleven. Um, we have no bid openings or payments.
Little bottle of water in there, but there's no.
Thank you.
But that will turn it over to construction update.
So construction curb warning signs and gate posts, the work's continuing. Hopefully they can get it finished before we get any heavy weather. Uh, our crushing project, we had a pre-construction meeting this morning and they're going to start the, some of the clearing work on, and Fisher Hill Quarry this morning. Pickled an area paving, we're waiting for those contracts and bonds to come back from the contractor. On design, uh, the last right of way was before even the consent agenda this morning. And the plant specs and advertisement documents are now being finalized. Our data collection project, um, the plans are to be complete with the field work in the next two weeks. Uh, bridge repair bundles, we're working through Wash Dot to get approval to go to add with our R F P to select that consultant for those three projects. And our annual striping contract is in internal review preparation, go to add first, first of the year. That's about it.
Okay. On the maintenance side, uh, east side, we're ditching and mowing. West side, we're brushing Trout Lake Highway and Fisher Hill area and we have some trees we're removing along Berchard. Berchard Orchard Road, Bertha Orchard Road. It could talk, it would be much easier. Um, facilities projects, most of them are pretty much where they have been. Insulation project is complete. Superior Court, we're finishing up some construction contracts, drafting them. Uh, no events, uh, water bottle filler still under construction, or should have that, we'll have that done before the end of the year. Uh, Otters voting area, we have asbestos abatement. There is some asbestos line. Around, um. The old, uh, toilet line that led in. Um, so that needs to be cleaned up. So we have somebody coming out of Yakima. It's just, it's a pretty simple process. They glove bag it. It's not a big thing like it would be to do the floor. Um, radio tower sites, we have a couple punch list items. And at that point, um, then we would mothball. Fund three oh six. And we'll work with the treasurer on what, what remaining funds are left in there.
Well, that would be my question. Where are we at with the budget of the radio tower? I mean, you keep telling us that we're under so far.
We're still under, yes.
There's, the question is whether we're going to have fifty thousand leftover or eight hundred thousand left.
Well, I wish I could say eight hundred.
That's what I keep trying to say, but that's the last numbers they see. So that's.
It's not eight hundred thousand.
It's gonna be closer towards the, the small end, yes, so they thought.
And I'll know when we, I want to make sure, I want to get everything in, so I'm not. I don't want to come back, oh, wait a second. So we only do this once. Of what's left in there, what's left in the fund. And at that time, fun get mothballs and then typically. The board and the other previous times takes it out once it's someplace else. And then you can either reopen the fund or you can start another fund anytime there's another project. Um, so follow up issues, vending machines. Uh, we looked at the two locations. Or three locations for them. Um, the most expensive and probably the worst location, I hate to say this, would be by the doors because you have the mailboxes there. You're looking at the back of the machine. Now, you grant, you could, you could.
Cross the glass.
Cross the glass, you would see it. But on the other side, we also have all the fire, uh, fire alarm system. So that would be expensive to relocate. So that leaves us two options. One in the hallway, there's a, a little, uh, recessed area kind of across from seniors. There is, and there's a circuit that runs through there and just services those outlets. Um, there's no outlets where we would put them, but it's pretty simple. There's a janitorial closet. We would just punch right through the back of that. And plug in a couple outlets. So we talked to our on-call electrician. And for him to do that, it'd be sixty eight. I mean, we could cut the hole, but they have to actually tap into the line. I mean, if it was my house, I'd do it myself, but it's not.
And how much is it?
Sixty eight hundred bucks.
Sixty eight hundred?
No, six to eight.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, not sixty eight hundred. That'd be craziness. So we could either go there or we could put it in the Mount Adams room. And there is, there's an outlet there. Um, if for some reason. It blew that circuit because that circuit also runs some of the other stuff in that room. Then there is a circuit on the other side of the wall that you would get them in and that'd be about three hundred dollars. If you, but the problem with the out there, you know, the pluses and minuses to that is, put it in the Mount Adams room and there's a, you know, there's people in there. They're having, you know, we're having a conference in there, whatever. Then the only people that the, that machines are available for are the people that are in that room.
Those machines don't burn a whole lot though, do they?
No.
So we shouldn't be worried about that.
We shouldn't be unless somebody brings something, you know, in. That's in the, the Mount Adams room. But again, it's not the end of the world. Just turn the machines off for that time too.
I kind of personally have pros and cons of the hallway and I have pros and cons of the Mount Adams room, so. I'm open to either choice, honestly.
I'm not in favor of the Mount Adams group. Don't like that feel love to it.
Okay, so hallway it is.
Hallway it is. Yes, hallway it is.
Yes. Um, person you're working with, with the vending machines? Qualified company?
Okay, yeah, they have them all. They have them all.
Okay.
He has all different varieties. Again, they give us ten percent of the. Of the cost.
And it's an established local company? We, we had a little bit of questions about a company that it came in. To different departments, but was saying they were doing vending machines.
Well, we'll do a little more research before we sign.
Maybe adopt to Elise.
We, I will do that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we will definitely, we will check in a little deeper. Cause if not, she'll hear about it anyway. Okay, moving on, uh, just to let you know, um, we've worked the last. Couple of days through part of the weekend to finalize Bluebirds. They wanted to get their road hall. To where we were in agreement between Public Works and Bluebird. Harbin Grid, basically. And so we've reached the agreement. They finally, you know, there was some. Some points that were holding out. But it still has to go through our P A and it still has to go through the board. Um, P A will look at it first. Unless you want it a different way, but that's typically what we do. P A looks at it. Um, I think the board has seen a portion of the agreement because we put some things in, but. And then it will, then they will sign it once the P A is okay. Board is always the last to sign. And then you guys get the opportunity to review it. And then it is a consent agenda item. Unless you want to do something different, but that's strictly up to the board and we don't have to worry about that. It's not going to happen until January or so.
I don't, I don't have anything wrong with that process, if for some reason, and it's on the consent agenda, and a board member has a problem with it, they can always pull it from the consent agenda for further discussion.
Yes. So yes, we will be sending it to the PA's office before the end of this week. We will, we're, matter of fact, uh, the last iteration, it's multicolored, because all the different changes throughout.
Let's say, I, I, I take a, a second to thank you and all your crew for working on it. Um, in getting all of the cautionary coverages that we all now find ourselves in a wiser place. Uh, so thank you for all your time on that.
And, you know, that allows us to, once it's executed, allows us to start, but we start moving forward with one of the processes, and that's the upgrades bridge, because until they do, the road hauls in place, and until they do all the work that's required for them to do, the overlays, adding rock, they could not haul any, anything up those roads, so essentially they can't start work. So to them, they, they want to get that moving forward. So, okay, with that, I'll turn it over to Seth, because he has, this is his thing here.
Cool. All right, so Grab County Road Administration Board asked Skamani County and Clickidat County to look into Little Buck Creek Road. There's a map in the, there's two maps in the back, first one's kind of vicinity map showing that this is a, a road that meanders from Skamania County into Clickidat County and back into Skamania County again. We had, Clickidat County had held that it is not a Clickidat County road for many years. Skamania County said it's not a Skamania County road, then they said it was Skamania County road, then said it wasn't Skamania County road. So the Grab Board asked us to make a final determination and the status of this road. I'm going to give a quick overview, this is everything in the report I handed you is every detail, but I'm not going to go into every detail today, I'll just go at a higher level, so it was established originally in 1913 and connected Northwest Lake Bridge to, into Skamania County through Clickidat County. A portion was vacated in 1962. And we held that it, we vacated the whole portion in Clickidat County, but we found an engineer's report when the vacation happened, that only a portion of it was vacated. In the early 2000s, there were concerns brought forth to both Skamania and Clickidat County and, and court filings to say that they wanted this road to remain a public access for emergencies in one way or another. All those court filings were eventually dismissed. So it was ultimately found that the portion labeled in the, the back map, it's kind of lines it out, section B remains a Clickidat County road. That's the section that was recommended in the engineer's report to not be vacated. There is no public connection to either Clickidat County or Skamania County on either portion A or C, and those remain as private roadways. Since there's no records of any taxpayer dollars being expended on sections A or C, we can't claim prescriptive rights as we would in some of these roadways. Neither made by Clickidat County or Skamania County. So we have a piece of road that we have no connection to. No public connection to. Skamania County thought we maintained it, we thought Skamania County maintained it, nothing has been done on that road for many years, there's no records of anything actually being done. It was brought forward because I think there was a land transaction recently, and they were wondering who plows the road. Currently, it's a primitive road, so we wouldn't get to plow that road unless there was some big event, we could get to it. So we've come up with three options of how we can handle this little floating roadway. Option one would be Clickidat County would vacate that portion roadway. I think that's probably not an option that is going to be viable, since there is a whole bunch of concerns of access to and from the resource lands or emergency ingress, egress through there. Option two would be adopt one of those sections, either A or C, C would be probably the more viable option. But that would mean picking up a new piece of roadway and establishing that as a county road, which probably would include some upgrades to it as well. Or option three, do nothing and handle it like any of our other primitive roads we have in the county, so maintain it as needed and plow it when we could get to it. We just, as long as we have continued access to the private roadway, so no one has a problem with us accessing through there.
It's gravel.
It's, it's gravel dirt, yeah.
Gravel dirt boulders, just like every other primary road, yeah.
Does that come out near the garbage dump area?
I don't know.
Of Underwood?
Maybe, I'm not sure where that garbage dump is at.
That's sealed four-wheeling road, um, so it used to be the county road, um, to Houston before there was bridges. Um, so it was the county road, and then it went down to Buck Creek through our property and all the way over to, um, uh, Spring Creek, and that was the county road for a long time, but.
I know which one we're talking about, I was going the wrong way, I was going south instead of north.
You, I'm sure you, you've been up it a long time ago. And so, uh, right now though, um, there is one residence off of that, um, section B and C um, that I know of, and I think they've been maintaining that snow plowing and everything themselves.
They may have, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then all the rest of it's just timber from there on. In, I remember years ago, we were always told that that had been vacated, that section had been vacated as well. And so people had put a gate across there, um, saying that this is a private road, the people to that house.
Right, and there's a letter that led to us finding out that it was never vacated, because we sent a letter, Clickidat County sent them a letter to remove that gate.
And so we've sent a letter saying, you have to remove the gate, that's an open public road. And it would be hard for us to then come back through and be like, actually, you take it, we don't.
Yeah. And SDS and DNR have all showed interest in that remaining a public roadway, so they can access their resources as well, so that's why I think it'd be hard to vacate that portion of roadway.
So we can continue it without spending dollars on it as well, correct? Just leave it in the, where it is.
Right.
And it doesn't like go to the top of our road construction budget while we don't work on any other primitive roads in the county.
Right. Just maintain, keep it a through route, whatever that means for that primitive road in particular.
Yeah, maybe grading once a year, maybe grade once every 30 years. Um, yeah, it would be very low, because we don't have connection to either side of it.
So I guess though, the question would be, is there's one residence, that residence changes hands every now and then. If they came through and said, hey, we want to put some rock on this road, do you mind if we put rock on this thing, what are we going to say?
Hmm, we would talk to them like we would anything else and see what they were proposing. And, uh, you know, we're not really big advocates of, wow, that sounds good. Um, we're not that big of an advocate to allow people to do that, because they put a lot of types of garbage, and then they move out, and then the next guy says, you need to fix this, this is terrible. So just, we would work with them, I mean, like we would any, anybody else, if somebody wanted to put rock on, and I can't say they haven't, because um, somebody used to put rock on, um, Van Hoyt years ago, because they hauled rock out of that area. Um, so certain instances, we have allowed it, so we would, we would take it, you know, we would work with them as it came up.
Yeah, they go through the work within the right-of-way permit process.
So is there any way we could get the right-of-way oversee with, um, the Outlaw Group without having to do the actual improvements, but just leave it as a?
Yeah, that's always the board's choice. You could establish that, I mean, because we've established Long Road without doing the improvements. So yes, the board could, the board could choose to establish that, that is very true, without doing the improvements. Like I said, we, we established Long Road to keep that access, to keep that connectivity to the back country, so we didn't get chopped off there.
Where's the house?
Okay, house is right here.
In relation to the road.
Here's the road, comes like this, drops around, where, house is right here. And then the main.
Got it.
Yeah.
So they are driving on county road, my, I guess my concern is if you took this piece away from them, then even if they wanted to do something there, they'd have to go through the county process to do it. Or right now, they could do whatever they want there.
Well, technically they can't, because it's on the terrace property.
No, it's on a different person's property.
It's on the Outlaw Group's property.
I, I, I don't really want to acquire more roadway. Um, I don't know that that's necessarily a good, a long-term idea for us.
Keeping it open for resources and for fire up in that area. It's steep country, there are, there is not a lot of roads up there.
And previously, like Seth said, you know, DNR is very interested, I think they own property over there. Um, my experience has been if anytime we've looked at vacating property that DNR has access to, they come out and absolutely go against it, because they're saying you're taking access away to the public now. Because you're taking away their road.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I'm in favor of vacating, but I'm also not in favor of acquiring new.
No, that's why we have the third option, leaving it as is.
That would be my recommendation.
So I think, um, if anything happens down at the mouth of 140, uh, or, you know, the mouth of the river, that is still the back way through, and it's still open, and so um, whether we just walk away, or we look at C and potentially, you know, seeing if Matarra would give that, or Outlaw Group would just give it to us. That would be, but in terms of vacating it, I can't do that, but leaving it as a primitive road, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, my suggestion.
Just don't want the, the homeowner up there who might want to put some, some money into it, having us tell them, no, you're stuck with a road you can't get to when it gets money.
No, we would, if they wanted to, we would work with them, there's no question. Uh, my suggestion would be we leave it as it is. Um, keeping in mind though, I agree with Commissioner Anderson, it is a way out. And if something was getting ready to change at C, where somebody was going to come in, because ultimately, they could stick a gate there, we can't think about.
If that happens, I would re-examine.
That's what I mean, and then you could go back and get an easement. Through C.
Did they stick a gate there, even though there's a house past it?
That gets into a private issue, you know, that then then I don't know how, that we, then we would have to talk with the PA, because essentially they're blocking off the county road, but you can't, I don't think you can make them give you access across the private road to a county road. They would say, county, if you wanted access to your own road, you should have got access to your. But again, that's more of a PA question, and I don't foresee that happening in the near future, because everybody's been pretty bought, you know, pretty okay with what's.
And that Outlaw Group are great people, so don't worry about that. Wow, okay.
Okay, anything else Seth?
Well, that covers it.
Okay, uh, last thing on here is, uh, Kim is retiring at the end of this year, now, that's that's going to be a big hit for us, just because Kim is so skilled. However, we are not, uh, saying we want to backfill Kim's position. So what we're going to do is, is we're going to divide it up. We're looking at ways to reduce, and that's another way to reduce, so we're going to keep it in-house. And essentially, somebody from the engineering side, the development side will do a portion of it, and somebody from our finance and administration will do the other portion of it. Um, but we would like to keep Kim on call where we could use her if we absolutely had to. Um, because this will be the first run, and what the main job of what we do is they update GIS, Kim has done it for years, upstates the county's, uh, mapping system for the parcels. Um, we're going to do it, and teams are two people, not the two people who'll be charging, they make a lot less than what Kim makes. But, um, just for now, in case they end up with a glitch, especially after we've been down for so, you know, we've been down until February. And then when it opens up, we'll get this big push of all these plaits that, you know, still be okay, because they're signed. But somebody needs to up, so when you go to the website, you punch on that plaque, now you have all these parcels. So we'd like to keep Kim on call, but she will not be getting paid while she's on call, she would only get paid if she came.
So are the two people that you have doing this, I guess I'd say both going to know the other one's job, if one of them.
Uh, yes, they will.
Have a little cross-training here, so not one person is holding the keys to the kingdom.
Yes, exactly, they will both be able to do the whole thing, but right now they can, one has the skill set in one portion of it. And the other one has the skill set in the other portion, so between the two, we can marry them together and make an 85% Kim, basic. Um.
I just like, I like that idea, but I also like the idea that this one learns a little more, and this one learns a little more, so you don't have one person.
That, that's the goal though, the goal is, is that you know, we'll do it that way, but the goal is each one of them will be able to do it on their.
Will Kim be contracted labor then?
If we have to, if we have to call her.
Okay.
And, you know, I, we have a very good working relationship, I've worked with Kim for a long time. And if we get in a pinch, and it's just a question, Kim's not going to charge us. She'll just, you know, if we have a, a small question, hey, Kim, we need this, only way she would, is if we literally had to bring her in. And then we would talk about cost at that.
Okay, I, I have no problem with it, I like it, um, I love it. Um, and, and thank you for thinking outside the box, you're, you're never ceasing to amaze me these days, so. Well done, sir.
And we're trying to make reductions where we can, this is a GIS budget, so this is, this is general fund budget. That we're trying to reduce, so we'll continue to try to reduce FTEs where we can during, with, you know, during people retiring and whatnot. So that gets us to three this year.
You had a question in the back or hand raised from Director King, just so you know.
Uh, Mr. King, you have a question?
Added the conversation, GIS invited.
Yes, it is also. So it is invited, that's why we want to keep, because if we get in, Jeff needs something, there's an event. And remember, I got two rookies now, versus, I had somebody that'd been doing it for a long time. And Kim is very skilled. Uh, everybody wants to retire, I can appreciate it. So, that's all we have.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Nope, nope, nope.
Good.
Good job, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up, uh, Emergency Management Director Jeff King.
Morning.
Good morning, sirs.
Morning. Everybody have a chance to read my update that was presented last week?
Yep, I'm just trying to get it on my computer, so I can follow along.
Excellent, anybody have any questions? About it in general? Few points I'd like to make when they talk about the radio system performance and functionality, that means, uh, on the user side for the, uh, users of the radio system, all the way from dispatch out to the field units. Um, currently, it is operating, she, operating normally from their perspective, however, as you can see right after following that in maintenance, um, there is a lot going on. And we are working through all of those, do you have any questions on those? And making a purchase of the, uh, uh, power management units, um, because we're down to one in our spares, and they are, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of 72 in our system. And since we had three of them fail in a week and a half, um, I'm, I'm actively purchasing as quickly as I can get them five in spares. Um, other generator issues being dealt with, continuing, uh, to struggle with the generator at the Clickidat site. I did do its test yesterday. I did do its test yesterday, uh normally however. Um, other issues being resolved. Um, got a, a radio that's got a failure mode at stacker butte. Um, and I'm still waiting on Benton County to repair the uh. Lightning arrest grounding system that go off a butte so that we can go in and reconnect our equipment to it. If you'll remember right. I think it was early in the summer, July, we discovered. Someone had cut the fence and gone in and cut all the ground wires that, all the copper they could. Without getting into the building and setting off alarms and so on. So, once that's available, we'll be making that repair as quickly as possible because that makes all of our equipment vulnerable. To electric shock. Um, radio site leases, still working on a couple from Juniper. And still working with the P U D to upgrade their system that is uh used as part of our microwave. And that we're co-located in several locations. Um, the interlocal agreement for radio system use and nine one dispatch services with the city of Goldendale. You just approved on your consent agenda. Thank you. The city of White Salmon, uh. They've had some illness, the staff there, so. Lacking behind a little bit, but I've communicated with them a few times and um that doesn't uh. Expire until the end of February anyway, so we've got some time still. Um, Sadist Pass project is, uh, as you heard from Public Works, still in the punch list phase. Um, I just was made aware the other day that we have an issue with the security camera at that site. And um, we're gonna have to work with Public Works on what we can do about that. The one that was installed was not the one we requested and it's not uh viable for our needs. Nine one call taking and public safety radio dispatch, Bill.
Hello, so um for staffing, um our. One communications officer is finishing up her basic training, so should be released uh this month. Um, we are in the process of the first review for our next hiring for casual. Uh, position and we've actually received quite a, a number of applicants. For that position, so that's good news. Operations and training, we're working on the uh cross-discipline training task force, had the second meeting on December thirteenth. Uh, it was well attended, so we're working with our um counterparts, different agencies to provide mutual training. Across the board. Um, we're continuing to do the cross-training across the board as well. So, as I mentioned at the last update, uh, we went out to Golden Dell Police Department, we had uh. Both uh G P D and Sheriff's Office. Uh deputies in attendance and provided training for um Spillman or yeah, Spillman Flex. Or Motorola Flex, um which is. Everything that they do and everything that we do goes through that system. Um, so we're providing training, basic training at that. Um, so we'll be providing additional training and reaching out to Benji White Salmon. And then doing a second round of training for everybody. With that, so everything's working good for that. Um. Staff attended various training sessions with Clickedet County E M S Fire. Departments collaborating in any, in every way we can and keeping those communications open. On the text to nine one one, um. As, as you know, we've moved forward with the text to nine one one and we received a. Um, text from Highway eighty-four. On December fifth was uh very interesting Spanish-speaking text. Um. It went on the lines of, um, I'm in danger. Um, and then we started questioning through that, um, working with the two other dispatchers on duty. Um, we were able to get more information um and guide the individual to. Um, it was quite, quite an interesting situation, but they stopped at Biggs Gas Station. At our urgent request for him to use the restroom. And so the people that were in the car with him stopped there. Um, and then law enforcement was able to make contact there. So that was resolved. The individual thought he was in danger. What turned it out to be not so much. It was more of a misunderstanding with the people that he was in the vehicle with. So, however, in his mind, the danger was there. He communicated with nine one one. We were able to receive that. Uh, because our towers are all along eighty-four and at higher positions, we, we received that communication, so. And we just coordinated with our um agencies. Um, in Oregon and that came to a good resolution, so it's. We haven't had many other incidents that, like that, but had this been an actual kidnapping case, it would have worked out. Just perfectly. Um, where the individual kept texting as if he was texting a friend or something and it was not. Discovered, nobody realized what was happening. Until law enforcement, uh, law enforcement was there.
Challenges is uh for us in that is that we can't transfer it to that other agency, so then we have to. Be the go-between as well as the Spanish language. It creates a challenge in the text to nine one one arena, so we're. Working through those and trying to figure out ways to navigate that and. So it is viable. It's, it's a new thing that needs to be fleshed out. And I'll take over here, pun one oh seven, one thirty-five. We are meeting today with the Finance Committee. To finalize the details of that and that should take uh effect January first. Any questions about? Any of that so far? Excellent. On the emergency management program side, we continue to meet um with the School Emergency Planning Working Group. Uh, that represents, or as they're all invited, there are a good percentage of all school districts in the county that participate. Um, met with them yesterday at another productive meeting to discuss the bullet points that I have listed here. And moving forward, making them more a part of the planning and preparation for emergencies at schools. Uh, for the first time, we had a representative from the fire agencies, Kasefa President. Um, came at my invitation. Uh, so that we can start engaging the schools with their local fire agencies. To collaborate on emergency preparedness and response. And that goes along with our emergency response information for business project. Still moving forward with making that um. Uh, requirement and C U P and other permitting processes as well as existing businesses to get them to give us information we need. When we dispatch emergency responders. Um, under training and exercises. Are restarting the mass casualty incident, a training and exercise program. You can see a, a list of bullet points there, goals. This will be a sixteen to eighteen month process. And there are multiple agencies across the county that are planning to participate in that. Um, as well as the schools and that school safety uh committee, so. They're, they're eager to uh be involved in those things. The uh program grants, uh, we're still waiting on the twenty-three E M P G, um. Unfortunately, State Emergency Management Division is. Going through a severe staffing issue now and they're way behind. They were doing the uh S H S P grants. First and then getting to the E M P Gs. Uh, unfortunately, that means that uh we can't apply for any reimbursements. Um, until we get that grant fully executed. I have no doubt that it will be, it's just not come through the pipeline yet. And at the bottom of that section, under the twenty-three S H S P. FEMA is still holding funds back for the National Priority Area Projects, uh, which we. Worked with the P U D to get. Those two projects are still on hold pending funding. So, see what happens there. That's a significant uh amount of money in those two projects. P U D was trying to get done for uh security at their facilities. Um, the U S team is uh in their annual review policy and procedures and lessons learned from the past twelve months. Um, as I believe you already know, we did have flood event in the Glenwood area. Emergency management sandbags that are stored at the county shops were made available as well as sand. Uh, at the Glenwood County Shop, did receive one complaint from uh. Resident out in Glenwood who didn't identify themselves, but left a message on my desk phone ranting that this wasn't acceptable and. I'm not sure what they expected is for a team of county employees or volunteers to come and fill bags for them or not. But that is our uh standard, you know, in case you get questioned about it, practices. Public Works either opens up their shop. And has a pile of sand and puts out the sandbags that emergency management has purchased. Or they'll take a load of sand to that community if it doesn't have a shop in it. And dump it in some central location and along with sandbags and people can come and fill their sandbags and take them. Uh, to protect their property. There was minor flooding in other areas and still at threat of some of those things with the weather we're having. We've had a record amount of rain in the short period of time, especially for the east side of the county. And last on the list is the Simcoe Mountain Amateur Radio Emergency Services Repeater, uh relocation, W P T. Um, when approached by the owner of that repeater, the uh Aries Emergency Coordinator for the county. Which is all volunteer organization, but supports our emergency response. Um, and, and. They indicated that they were not willing to encumber their property. And have that repeater stay there, so I. Had the idea and facilitated discussions with the Aries uh coordinator. In the city of Goldendale and last night at the city's. Meeting, the council agreed to move forward with drafting an agreement so we could move that. Uh, just farther east, the next ridge line, hopefully onto the city's uh watershed property. So, thankful for that, but disappointed in the uh answer from W P T. Any questions?
How much of a reduction um will that do uh by moving that repeater and area coverage?
It, it, and that is one of our main concerns because if it, if it wasn't about the, the location where it is now and that. Perfect coverage area, because we can use that repeater, well, all the way to Cascade Locks and cover our county to the east. It depends where on the city's property we can put it. If it becomes. An issue that we can't see at least the central part of the county because of the ridge lines that are in the way. Uh, then the other alternative is to move it into the Sadist Pass site. Uh, have uh the Aries group have an agreement with the county. And put it at Sadist Pass, but that would seriously diminish the coverage area. If we can get it to the very south tip of the city's property. On that ridge line comes right down to the end of their property on the south end. We have road access, we can actually get it there, uh, then it will work. Anywhere else on the city's property would. Reduce the coverage area and, and basically all effectiveness for that purpose. Yeah. All things we're trying to work through.
And is it a passive repeater or is it, is it active?
It's active, yeah.
Okay, just with solar panels and?
Correct, yep. Yeah, it's got a solar power system. Usually it sits and just hums along. We did go up last Friday and replaced um the battery bank. Because since W P T, and that's really why this all came up, the, the no trespassing, a few months back. They did allow us to go there and, and get it back in operation. It had been down for two months. Uh, we were trying to negotiate something with them. And uh, because frankly, they didn't even know it was there. It was, it was, it had been there for. Many decades, thirty years, and uh they were not aware.
Is there any reason? Why the change?
Uh, well. The, it was allowed to be put there by the previous ownership. And like I said, W P T didn't know and uh the person that owned it and operated it for Aries. Um, passed away a few years back. And so now that they've closed their property to trespassing. Um, then we needed to ask permission to go and maintain it and they said, wait a minute.
So. Baker didn't know that it was there?
That's, yes, and he's still not been to the site. He attempted to get there last week sometime. Vehicle and couldn't make it, had some issues with their A T Vs, so we couldn't go a second day. That's correct. So, um, earlier there was a discussion with Finance Committee about the radio project fund three oh six versus. What to do, what to do, all that stuff and from my perspective, um, you know, where the funds come for, from for the. Uh, replacements uh in the radio system that some we've already postponed for a few years. Um, that forty years projection spreadsheet that we have out there, uh, put things on the C I P. For various years, uh, some of those things, single projects to replace. Um, all the base station radios for one channel. Um, which are eight channels in total, not all eight channels are represented at all twelve sites. Uh, so it's not straight math, but um, some of those projects to replace that equipment for the. The H F radios as well as the microwave radios. You know, are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for a single project or lift replacement. Um, those radios, both uh V H F conventional and the microwave radios are all. You know, basically computer units, um, so their life expectancy. Is finite, just like all computers. So I'm, continue to manage that. Um, what you do with Fund Three Oh Six. Doesn't, shouldn't have any bearing on that unless you decide you wanna use that as your vehicle to fund the replacements. But I agree with the Finance Committee's recommendation that that fund could be. Closed, uh. I've always put my capital projects for upgrades and. Replacement of radio system equipment onto the C I P. Already, so. But I do wanna make sure that, that we all understand that someday that bill's gonna come due and. We can't keep putting it off because at the point that. Um, that equipment starts to fail, just like our power management units uh being computerized. They seem to have. The habit of, of failing in rapid succession. Once those electronics start to fail, it will all start to fail. And those funds need to be planned for.
Do we have any idea why three power units failed at the same time?
It was just last week that that happened and no, we have not been able to send them back to the manufacturer. Uh, for repair yet. Last time we sent, I think we sent two of them back. One of them, they said couldn't be repaired. The other one was repaired.
It just seems weird to have three of them.
Yes, sir. Yes, and uh, the situation was that. We had two of them fail, went and repl- at different, two different sites, went and replaced one of them. Uh, and the one that was in the spares kit. Um, had been used and, and swapped out for another one in the past. Um, it was barely used though, but upon installation, it failed as well. So that's how we got to three. In rapid succession. So, we're looking into all that, but. We can't, we can't let that public safety radio system go down, so.
Well, that was my question, um. Public safety, personnel safety in the field twenty-four hours a day, and if we have a system go down, is there any? Um, any fear at all about reserves? If you have to come in on a quick notice to ask for repairs to keep that system going. We shouldn't have to worry about if those funds are combined, that you'll have that money and can walk back out and repair those services.
Yes, it's always been the case in the past as well as with, and, and that's why I ordered five more of those units. As, as soon as I. Um, could, they're, they're on at least a ten day turnaround. That's what they're telling us. We'll get them in ten days. Um, because any, yeah, being down to just one spare for replacement is vulnerable. Um, so I wasn't gonna wait on that. But the amount of spares and what we have in spare inventory. But the amount of spares and what we have in spare inventory and the um surplus of equipment. That I've been able to skewer from other entities over the last three years, I guess. We're we're sitting good on most things not to have to, you know, i- it's not necessarily about the money. It's about the wait time. For anything that you order as well. So.
Okay.
I have, yeah, we have, we have a good supply of spares, but if something odd happens like in this case, then. You know, anything's, I I will, I will call the chairman and we will do what we need to do. And we do have um, so redundancy in our system as well. And in the case of this one power management unit that failed upon insertion and the tech didn't have another one with him, it was back here in Goldendale. Um, we took, we took the power management unit out of another radio that's our least used in that area. And or it was an acceptable um down. I made that decision. So that channel was offline until he could get back, get it in the next morning, um, replace that. We swapped it out. So we didn't have a dispatch channel down or one of the primary operating channels down. We had a secondary operating channel that we took offline. For that thirty-six hour period.
Any questions for?
So of these channels that we're managing. Um, how many of them? I guess don't touch or they touch other organizations like we have a channel for like West Side Fire, right?
Uh, no, we have a West Ops, so that's for all hazards.
Okay.
Use, um, so any discipline during, you know, an event where they need to communicate. Outside of a dispatch channel. So um, yeah, there's West Ops, Central Ops, East Ops and County Ops. The three regionals, self-explanatory, West End, Central and East. East has a little overlap in the center of the county because it's rep- it is represented with a radio at Juniper. County Ops uh is countywide, so we can use that if one of our dispatch channels goes down, it has countywide coverage. So that is a redundant availability there, but it's it's mostly used by um deputies. And the ambulance service and search and rescue have the only three agencies that have countywide. Not even the ambulance district because they don't go clear east, but need that countywide operating channel to coordinate with each other. That's what that's used for.
No further questions, no further questions.
Do you, do we want to make a decision for if I hear Jeff's in agreement with that fund?
Uh, at any time, anybody who wanted to can make a motion to. Uh, advise, well, our electeds. Uh, to place all the REIT in three oh three effective January first, if somebody so choose to make that motion.
Uh, so Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to notify the finance committee. That we combine all uh of the funds into three oh three. As recommended by the finance team and also approved by Mr.
I will second that.
Okay, we have motion, second the discussion. Uh, anything else you need or any other wording you need other than that? Finance people back there in the back of the room? Are we good with that motion? Or do you need any clarification to the motion?
I I I think we're, we're just talking about, I think we're good.
Okay, uh, with that, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion of moving. Uh, the REIT money to three oh three and all future REIT money to three oh three effective January first, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Have a great rest of your week.
Shall try and happy holidays to you, sir, and you, other shirt, and you, ma'am. Alrighty then. Next item was discussion of the December fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Of which. The part I want to point out.
Let me pull it up. Unless you have copies, copies.
Well, eventually I will have copies.
There's one sheet from month before um publication.
What's that?
But there was nothing we had to sign. Was it just notifications?
Okay, December fifth.
Okay.
I said, yes, he wants to make changes.
Yep, now I want to make an addition. So at ten o'clock in the morning, the Ministry Public Works Director Jeff Hunter and County Engineer Sespero and Design Engineer Nathan Erickson. Discuss the Title Twelve Road Standards update with the board. And while that is entirely correct, I believe. If the board so chooses to leave it at that, we are omitting. A very vital piece of information the public should be aware of. So I would recommend that the board adds. Uh, during this discussion, Commissioners Anderson started discussing the STRs. Chair Christopher reminded Commissioner Anderson that he had recused himself from the SCR STR discussions. And asked him to please stop talking and leave the room if the discussion was going to shift to STRs. Commissioner Anderson refused. Chair Christopher then announced that he will be stepping down his chair as to not take part in what he feels is an unethical discussion. Commissioner Christopher then left the dais, uh, which is the bench for those that don't know, and sat in the audience. Vice Chair Anderson resumed the meeting and the STR conversation. Commissioner Christopher returned to the dais and the chair when the remaining board members finished their STR discussion. Now, whether you would like that at the minutes or not, I think anytime a commissioner steps down. Or out of the conversation, that should be an important fact that's noted in the minutes. Um, anytime a commissioner leaves the bench, um, that should be an important fact. That is noted in the minutes, however you want to word that. Um, but intentionally omitting that. Doesn't speak to transparency. That one's for you. It is now a public record. And I wasn't going to advise staff to change the wording. Um, and potentially get staff in trouble with the board. So as it's spelled out in our rules, if we adopt them, if there was something we wanted to add to the minutes, this is the appropriate way to do so. So I am. Um, following the rules before the rules were uh approved. And I don't know if either of you would like to. Disagree uh with what I said happened. Uh, you're more than welcome to do so.
Um, and for me, um, this is not a regular thing that we do with each. Section of our meeting minutes, our meeting minutes are kind of a recap and to further. Proof something that's happening or somebody may have questions about, the meetings are recorded and all of the.
This is Thursday workshop, it was not recorded, which means the minutes need to be accurate.
Um, I have problems with the contents because it is your recount of that. If you so choose to have something added, I would simply like to turn it back to. Uh, Christopher Chair announced that he would be stepping down as chair and not take part in the discussion. And that would be left um to further discussion with you by someone if they have questions. But I think it's um slanted and I think it's your uh view of what happened. Uh, but just to denote that you were not in favor of the session is fine with me and did not take part. But other than that, it's getting into argumentative and speculation. Um, we worked through the situation. I think it was solved and we moved on. Um, so I don't think it's necessary to emotionalize it and recap it in writing.
Any input?
Uh, thank you, Commissioners Zoller. I would agree with uh everything that you had said there. Um, just because you bring up uh the word STR um does not mean that you have to recuse yourself from everything. Especially in something that's legislative. Um, when we are looking at this, um, it was Commissioner Christopher who directed staff to include the STR in. Um, the Title Twelve Road Standards, um, of which uh I don't feel that staff um. Is in favor of because you don't find that anywhere else in any other road standards anywhere. Um, so while I appreciate Commissioner Christopher stepping down. Um, for his own rationale and reasoning, I don't think that it needs to be um as Commissioner. Uh, Zoller stated um in a biased uh manner, um, or slanted, I think is what she actually used. Um, I do appreciate Commissioner Christopher worrying about that. Um, but also if that were the case, Commissioner Zoller would also have to uh recuse herself. And would not be able to vote on the Title Twelve Road Standards as she has short-term rentals on her property um that everybody is well aware of. So I I think we've taken this and uh blown this come far out of proportion and continue to try to blow it out of proportion. Um, for clearly political reasons.
Well, and I'd like to say, um, I am glad this circled back around to our desk. Um, we talk a lot about a single commissioner asking for things, asking staff or asking departments. And this definitely was an ask again by a single commissioner and I'm glad that it was moved forward to the board's decision. Not from a singular person.
It wasn't asked to staff, it was asked of the board. I I did not put this on staff, just to be clear. Uh, it takes the board of the whole to make a decision, so the decision.
I'm not going to put staff on the spot to recap that with you. But I'm glad it's before the board.
Are, I'm just trying to clarify, are you talking about th- this red line right now or are you talking about the actual Title Twelve? Um, road standard inclusion?
Are you talking to me? I'm talking about uh asking to alter the meeting minutes.
Oh, got it. Okay, just wanted to be, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Never asked staff to alter the meeting minutes. I asked them if they would please not put them on there for approval and put it on the worksheet for discussion. Uh, I don't know that they had any idea what the discussion would even be about. So what is the decision of the board? Leave them the way they are and. Um, leave act the fact that I step down and remove myself from the diocese or how do you want to word it, since you don't like my wording?
I thought Commissioner Zoller's wording was just fine.
I think Commissioner Christopher then announced that he would be, Commissioner Christopher announced. That he would be stepping down as chair and not take part in the discussion. And I would leave it at that.
You want to say what part, what discussion I wouldn't be taking part in?
Because that's your opinion and you have every right to step down. You have every right for the public to know you stepped down. And if somebody wants to have a further conversation with you, they can, but to deem things unethical, you would have to go out for legal opinion. Um.
Can couldn't you at least put STR discussion? Because that is why I stepped down.
It is not an STR discussion. You are doing an ordinance for STRs in which I've recused myself. This is the discussion on the Title Twelve Road Standard, sir.
Alright, you guys word them however you want. I mean, it's, it's not hard when, I guess I would say. Uh, the week before this happened. We had an executive session. Of which twice commissioners left the room. Because they had recused themselves from topics that we were discussing. It's.
And I think you're, you're extending this conversation and we need to just focus on this rather than to get into the back and forth. We're talking about this discussion and that discussion compared to this one is apples and oranges.
Okay.
For justification.
Do you have the terminology that the board has chosen to put in? Perfect, moving on.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order before lunch?
Not for me.
Yeah, if, since we have a little bit of time, um, I can let you know that. Um, I had a conversation with previous Director McClure. Um, on uh the Case of Peta Board and where that came from. Um, and I invited Director McClure to attend this meeting. Uh, but he's currently on an airplane back to Connecticut. Um, and so I said I would um. Uh, give at least a little bit of an update of what that discussion was. Um, and if you'd like, I can give that.
Yes.
Uh, so the Case of Peta, as far as he knows, um, all the way back, um, they've had a. Um, I think a thousand dollars in the checking account. It's never gets used, it just sat there. Um, and this goes back, I think, to the mid nineties. Um, the Case of Peta was actually not the first economic development authority that was formed in Clickatack County. There was actually one prior to that. Um, that um only had access to the same thing that Case of Peta does, which is like, I think it's, it was thirty-five thousand dollars for many years. Um, and that we, the Case of Peta Board has always chosen to use on the um economic development. Um, not director, but what Richard used to be, what now Chelsea is, or that staff time. And that is what Case of Peta Board actually has control over is those dollars. Um, that Case of Peta doesn't get, that was an agreement between the um. Uh, the county, Case of Peta and the state uh commerce on how that money transfers straight to the county. And so it goes straight to the county, but Case of Peta actually votes on those dollars for what they're going to be used for. That's the one place I think where there could be an issue, where there could be a separation. Where Case of Peta could say, we actually don't want to spend that money on that. We want to spend it on something else. That would be, that where Case of Peta determines and that would be different from the board. I know the board is on Case of Peta and has. Quite a lot of weight on that board, but that's the only one. The point oh nine dollars actually comes straight to the county. Um, they don't roll through Case of Peta. The reason um that we use Case of Peta is because part of the the legislation. For the point oh nine dollars is is that you're required to consult with the cities and the ports on the use of those dollars. So what we have chosen to do for all the last years is that we use Case of Peta as that consulting. Because members of the city as well as the port serve on that rather than creating a whole nother board that wouldn't make any sense. And so that's the the direction in terms of um doing a um Case of Peta as their own organization. Um, of doing the 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 audit for the state, that has never been done um under his knowledge. E- even in the nineties and prior to him managing it in the two thousands, that was, that was never done. No money rolls through it because it all goes through the county. So for the the record, for the public record, all those dollars get audited every single year. They get audited through the county process. Now, if we need to audit the thousand dollars that Case of Peta has. Then um we can fill out the documentation and do that audit and that's, you know, it should be simple and we could direct staff. Um, uh, so we could direct Richard or we could ask that the Case of Peta Treasurer um do that, which we all know is Dale Canal. Um, but again, um, it should be easy, very simple because no money rolls through Case of Peta, but they do have a checking account. Um, one in which I think because it never gets used, I think once a year they have to send a letter and hey, don't, don't bill us for it. Otherwise, you know how when you don't have a, um, you're not using your checking account, you get that fifteen dollar a month fee for it, for not using it. So, um, and I think we still send that in once a year. Um, and those, that's the update that I have, uh, at least from my discussions.
And and I had dedicated to call some other counties and work through some things. And that's my memory of the KC Peta Board over the years and how it functioned. And it's also what I found when I reached out to other counties. Similar, isn't it very similar to the function as the SAM Recovery Funding Board? The money comes to the county, they're an advisory. The money comes to the county. They're an advisory board and we pass through.
So the only difference is, is that the, the Surf Board is a subdivision of us. And so the SAM Recovery Funding Board Group uh, makes recommendations. And we have the, the public group, you know, that comes in, they, they make forward the recommendations. Those recommendations get forward to the Board Accounting Commissioners and the board has never voted against that. But the board has that right. We could say, no, actually, we don't like this. This, this project goes against whatever the community feels. We have not done that. It's come close before. But we've also voted on projects or the board has voted on projects for Surf Board that actually used to come to the county too. And so it's just another one of the checks and balances because it still goes to the state and everything else. And so with Case of Peta, I'm not too worried because at least all those dollars have always been audited. And because, I mean, from my perspect, pers- perspective, if this was a major issue, like a, like a very, like a red flag issue, the last thirty years um, would have been flagged by the auditor's reports. But.
And didn't we get that clarification this morning from the auditor? That there was a little bit of difference in looking at this because of the COVID years and a couple of things that she was looking at something else, not specifically this.
That was something.
That was something else. Okay.
Yeah. So I guess the only, you know, the direction I think we need to give staff is, should we, at least at the very minimal direction, um, is to have staff uh, work with the auditor for hopefully a little bit of help um, uh, on whether or not we fill out the, the state auditor program, which, you know, it, it should be really simple, um, because money doesn't come in and money doesn't go out. You just.
Have a yearly report.
Yeah. But again, that's just.
No, and that's how I understood it to function, so.
Well, I would um, still advise waiting for the finale update from the auditor on how it needs to be set up versus making our own determinations. It needs to be set up, but that's just.
Wasn't it the auditor's recommendation that we at least do the um, set up a, uh, annual audit with the state? When she was in here? Heather, we can't hear you.
I wasn't speaking. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I didn't make a recommendation one way or the other, other than that you look at the formation documents and decide which way you wanted to go. The state has deemed that it is its own entity. I believe the prosecutor's office agrees with that conclusion. I agree with that conclusion. So it was whether or not we fill out the documentation as the state has requested and continue to maintain that corporation as a corporation. Or whether or not you fill out the paperwork acknowledging that it's an entity and then dissolving it as an entity if that was not the way you were going to go. But either way, you have to acknowledge that it's an organization.
So, right, so for clarification, we don't just get to do an audit and keep status quo where they make a recommendation to the board and the board gets the final decision. Uh, because that is not the way the bylaws are set up. So we either have to start abiding by the bylaws or change the bylaws.
What do you mean? The, they are just a recommendation to the board with regards to point oh nine dollars? Because we're, we use that as the um, consulting that's required under it. That, that's, point oh nine is completely different than the organization as itself.
That is not the way that most people have read the bylaws. So you two have a different opinion. It sounds like then the auditor, the prosecutor.
That's not true. Uh, they're talking the same language you are, we are, and I'm understanding what they want. There was a glitch and the paperwork had not formally been taken care of for the thousand dollars or whatever. They build and choose and whatever they invest and move and they come to us and discuss with us. But the decision is, or the, the determination is we need to stop convoluted the funds and understand that the oh nine dollars are separate from what is in the holdings of the Economic Development Board. That's the separation. So we're asking that the Economic Development Board through staff oper- operate correctly, fill out their paperwork and move forward with the money that's in their holdings, be subject to audit for that bank account, everything that it needs to be happening with them. But with the understanding that it's clear that the oh nine dollars drops through the county and the county commissioners themselves are responsible for that money, and it is audited every year.
Well, there's two issues. One of them is the audit part, which you're discussing. The other one is the way those bylaws are set up. They are not an advisory. That is, what I'm hearing is the interpretation of the auditor and prosecutor. So.
You're, you're conv- convoluting that. I think the advisory portion is only with regards to the point oh nine dollars, which, which that organization does not have control over. Okay, in the first place. So I.
The board has a different opinion than me and the board can move on. And, and if it has enough knowledge that it wants to make a decision, it can make a decision. We disagree. But.
So.
It is in the first.
So do you believe that Case of Peta should have no say or no, no advisory um, role as to the point oh nine dollars, which is what they have been doing?
No, I believe the bylaws state we have no say. When Case of Peta rules, it's final.
When Case of Peta rules on the dollars that actually go through them.
It's not a debate. You asked me what I've said, what I felt. I told you, you don't have to try to educate me. I'm telling you, I believe by the bylaws, when Case of Peta says we want to spend the money here, that's where the money's spent. We don't get to deny it or, or say otherwise. So that is my understanding. I don't need an education on it or that, that is my understanding. And if you have a different understanding, then go forth with your understanding.
Commissioner Zoller, um, would you feel confident in directing staff to fill out the required paperwork for the um, organization to ensure that it's anything that the auditor, state auditor's office says needs done, needs done? So that we can uh, keep Case of Peta, its independent organization, uh, incorporation, as well as ensure that it is abiding by the um, audit standards?
Absolutely. And I, I think it's crucial to get it done at this point and not muddy the water any further. Keep Casey Peta doing the good work that you're doing, but do housekeeping mechanisms and clean up the paperwork.
And based on how you worded that motion, I would a hundred percent agree. Because you directed staff to work with the auditor and get it working the way it's supposed to, which fixes by the law.
And by that, to clarify, to staff, that means uh, accessing the state paperwork that needs to be finalized every year in San Diego for that board and also being subject to the audit and accounting for the checking account that belongs to Casey Peta. Those are the items.
That is one part of it, yes.
And did you make a motion, Jake?
No, I, I was just asking the question.
Okay.
I don't know if we have to.
Would this board entertain uh, an update from the prosecutor or a legal opinion on whether Case of Peta has its own authority? Uh, which I believe it does, to determine where those funds go or whether this board has the final say, which I believe is what this board believes. Would you be willing to hear from the prosecutor and his opinion?
Which funds are you talking about? The oh nine dollars do not go to Case of Peta.
It's in the RCW.
I understand, without muddying the water, we previous boards made a board that determines where those oh nine funds go. This board would like to retain final control. But it is other people's opinion that we don't have final control. Case of Peta has final control. So I'm asking if this board would like a legal opinion as to the corporation documents on whether this board has final control or whether Case of Peta, when they say we're giving money here, it goes there. That's what I'm saying happens. You disagree. I'm asking if you'd like a legal opinion.
Short of that too, we can also do point oh nine, one oh one, and we can have, is it Commerce?
It comes.
We could actually have them come in and visit with us and give us a one-on-one update.
Last time you talked, you were going to reach out to them. So I don't know if you have or not, but.
No, I worked on the county part of it to see what everybody else was doing first. Uh, but if you'd like to have that short of bothering the prosecutor and running things, giving them our work, I'd be glad to have Commerce come and visit with us.
I would still, as this is something that the county could be found legally liable for if it's doing it wrong, uh, would like to have a legal opinion to keep us from being sued in the future. Potentially being sued.
Richard, you look like you have.
You have a legal opinion for us, sir? The chair has invited you.
So thi- this was a, yeah, very impromptu. Yes, I can reach out to Commerce with my contacts and see what, what sort of introductory type of training that we can utilize for point oh nine and to ensure that we're abiding by all policies and procedures and stuff like that state. Since I, I don't think it should be a, a huge issue. You just got to find the right person.
Uh, there is a difference though between what policy procedures are abided by the state and the way we have our corporation bylaws formed. And if we want to continue in the way we're currently running, I believe that that can be done. You just have to change the wording of your bylaws.
And I, I think they have a copy of that. I would be pretty well sure because they kind of are oversight. And if they come in to visit with us, they can, you can tell them the problems and look at it all. They can bring the RCWs with them. They can put a packet together. And then we can hand that packet to the prosecutor for his approval or disapproval. Or his opinion. It makes it easy for him that way. Everything's in one packet, one handbook, and he can look through it rather than our kind of um, on the edge questions.
Well, I think he's already rendered an opinion, so it wouldn't take a bunch more work to have him render it either in paper form or in verbal form. If the board so chooses to have it.
Jake, what do you prefer?
I would uh, I would never um, try to remove someone's right to legal counsel. So the chair can of course, uh, write a P A opinion request. How it was explained to me uh, by uh, the previous director and how I've understood it in looking at RCW, um, that's the way I understand it. Um, and that um, for many years, when I worked in the department, going to Case of Peta Board meetings, it was also understood that um, the point oh nine dollars do not go through the Case of Peta Board. The Case of Peta Board is um, being used as the consulting portion of the point oh nine requirements. And I thought the, that the Case of Peta Board understood that role as well. And that the, the, this board, while this board has never disagreed, much like with the SAM Recovery Funding Board dollars, this board does have the ability to make that decision. The only place where this board doesn't have that um, full right is with regards to the dollars that come through the grant program that pays for what we use for wages. And so um, I would uh, love a point oh nine, one oh one, or whatever you can get from um, uh, Commerce. And I would of course read any P A opinion requests that the chair so chooses to put forward.
So I think I got a little bit of a to-do list. Sounds good. Any, anything else from the commissioners? Thank you.
Alrighty, anything else from the board?
I have nothing.
Hey, I'd entertain a motion for lunch.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion. We um, recess for the lunch hour.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to recess for lunch back at one o'clock. Uh, thank you all for being online and I'll see you this afternoon at one o'clock. I'll just.
Alrighty, we will call our afternoon session of the Clickatuck County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And our first order of business is uh, Washington Gorge Action Programs. Leslie Naromore is going to be giving us some kind of an update.
It's an update regarding the homeless housing funds that WAGAP uses. And I just wanted to make sure that you all are aware of how these funds are used and what they do in the county. Um, I have Lorraine Fritsch with me here today. She's on the WAGAP Board from the Goldendale area. Jennifer Paletto, who's our Associate Director, and Lori Call, who's the Housing Director for Clickatuck County. So WAGAP has been the main utilizer of these funds for many years now. And it's been since two thousand and eighteen, since we've used an increased amount. Internally, we break it down into two categories. We have one category of sixty thousand dollars that we use for rental assistance. And then another category um, of a little more than eighty-eight thousand dollars that we use for permanent supportive housing. And that's a program that we put together when Kevin Berry was in the Health Department. And people who are in the permanent supportive housing program have to have a disability of some sort, either the person who are themselves enrolled in the program or someone in the household. And we have an agreement um, that we run that program with. That is a partnership between Clickatuck County, the Health Department, Mount Adams Transportation, Comprehensive, who's no longer part of it, Clickatuck Valley Health, um, One Community Health and Washington Gorge Action Programs. And when people enter into that program, they sign an agreement that allows their case manager to accompany them on appointments if they need that. So they don't have to have them accompany them. But if they're, you know, elderly and they're going to a doctor's appointment and they're not going to remember everything that was said, that person is there to help them. And then with having that partnership between all of those agencies, we're really able to do much more effective case management for those people. Um, we have another, there she is.
We were just waiting on you.
My printer was like not. Welcome. So um, Kiandra, do you want to hand them each one of these? Oh, they're all, oh, I'm sorry. So this is just kind of a breakdown. Um, and Kiandra Erickson is our program supervisor up here in Goldendale of the Housing Department. She supervises all of the housing programs, including the Drop-In Youth Center and um, the Family Resource Center. So we've kind of broken down into categories so you can see who's been served by what program. Because this is really um, how we're keeping people housed. So you know, how we're preventing people from becoming homeless. Prevention goes a lot further than if you get involved after they've already become homeless. So we try to do everything that we can to keep people housed. So in our permanent supportive housing program, we served six households. Turning Point Rapid Rehousing, which serves families ages eighteen to twenty-four or families with children. We served ten households. In our E-Rap program, which was emergency rental assistance, so these are all households who are behind rent. We served a hundred and ninety-six households. In our HIN program, which people have to be qualified through DSHS to be able to qualify for that program, we served twenty households and that provides them with essential housing items and rental assistance. In our CHG grant, um, which is again eviction prevention and rapid rehousing, we served forty-eight households. The SEBRA program, which is the Community Behavioral Health Rental Assistance Program, that's a new one to us in the last year. We have to receive a referral from Beacon for a person to be enrolled into this program. But once we've received that referral, then we can help them and we've assisted eight households in that. And those are really high priority, high needs persons. And then in our eviction housing funds, which is another new funding source, we've served twenty-eight households. We have helped thirteen people who were exiting a facility so that if they came out of jail or the hospital, they weren't going onto the street. They were placed into a facility. And then same thing for warming shelters in Clickatuck County. Up to date this year, we've ser- served ten households in that program. And we've kind of been going back and forth a little. And we've kind of been going back and forth a little bit with the auditor's office, trying to get exact numbers on what exactly is in the fund for the document recording fees for the homeless housing program. I still don't have that today. They said they would have us, it to us by today, but we don't know that number. We know it has, it's been doing fine, so we're not really worried about that. But we are planning to utilize a little more funding this year than we have in years prior, since we haven't increased that in five years. Rents are on the rise. Um, we have more people who are potentially losing their homes due to rent being on the rise, losing their jobs, substance use, mental health issues. So, um, we will be utilizing a little more funding this year. And I just wanted to bring this before you because in years past with the other boards, anytime we changed the amount that we were using, we just wanted to let you know since we're stewarding these funds on behalf of the county.
And my only question is, so I'm not trying to imply, but so you think there's fund balance in that account?
There is. Yeah.
Great news to me. I always thought whatever we collected just automatically went. I didn't realize you weren't taking.
No, no, no. So it stays in the county's coffers and then we send a report once a month to the health department. And then they reimburse us based on the work that was performed in that month.
reimbursable, but I, I thought you were.
No, we do not take all of the funding and there's two separate streams. So one of them is for the purpose of affordable housing, mainly construction. We do not have anything to do with that fund. And then there's the one for homeless housing, which is the one that we. Correct.
My mic is not on. Um, I'm not gonna repeat all that, everybody in the room heard me.
How many of the households that you're serving, uh, through here are being served, um, by multiple of the, the programs? Is there overlap or is it all?
Absolutely, probably one hundred percent. You know, the first thing that pe- we, people come in, the first thing that we do is an assessment with them to figure out what their needs are. And then they're probably, if they're not already utilizing the food bank, they might get a referral there. They could get a referral to one of our community health workers. Um, they could get a referral to programs for peaceful living. It just depends on what the need is. But in all of our programs, there is a lot of overlap.
Is, I guess I'll piggyback off that one, cause that was one of the things that kind of stuck out in my head when we had our little workshop downstairs. Was it seemed like some of you were doing the same things and I'm like, you know, there's only so many dollars around. And, and so to me, it, and I don't wanna tell anybody how to do their job or anything. But if, if you're both doing the same thing, if, if you work together and one of you took that, then maybe the other one could spend that resource doing something that you're not doing.
There are.
Or do you think you're pretty covered?
I think we're pretty covered. I don't think there's a lot of overlap in the services that like, everyone has a very specific thing that they're doing. Like I'm thinking about Recovery Cafe, you know, they do offer some housing, but it's for a very specific population. We might also offer it, but probably not in the same way and they would be better served by that. And because they have those services as well, it opens up our funding to be able to serve.
To do something else.
To serve more households, correct?
We, we also have, um, limits to how much, how many people we could serve per month. So when we have these outside services that can provide rental assistance as well, that's when those really get utilized is when we aren't able to serve a household, um, due to the lack of funding.
Yeah, you can point them in that direction. I wanted to tell you, thank you for that coagative effort because so many times when you're in a situation like that, um, you've asked for help one place, you're reluctant to go ask for help another. And when you guys advocate for them so that they do get the food services, they do get the health services. They get a combined effort to make sure they're really taken care of. And I've seen it work and I appreciate that work that you guys work together.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And I would just add, you know, in all of our programs, the end goal is always stability. So, um, particularly like with Turning Point Rapid Rehousing, that's a two year program. So during the two years, they pay thirty percent of their income. Our goal is to get them into a home that once the program ends, we can step back. They can stay in that home and then they'll be able to afford it without our assistance. So that's always the end goal, that we're moving people through the programs, they're getting stabilized. And then we can open up that program for a new household who needs that assistance.
Is that the same way with the permanent supportive housing? What happens with their transition?
It's, yeah, it's the same. So, um, it's a, we have two permanent supportive housing programs in Clickatuck County. It's a little bit confusing because in one of them, it is permanent for the duration, that's at the guided path. So as long as they remain eligible for that program, they can stay in it. And mostly it's seniors who are on a limited income who are in that program because they're never going to increase their income, right? Like, we could put them through all the programs that we want, but at the end of the day, they're probably on social security. That's not gonna get any better. Um, and then in the two year one, it's the same as, um, Turning Point Rapid Rehousing where we work with them for the two year period. Try to help them increase their income. They're generally younger individuals who have that option. And then again, at the end of those two years, we step back and they stay in that home. They hold the lease with the landlord. And then they're able to kind of move on and stabilize themselves.
With the influx of immigration and there's federal programs to make sure they get into housing. Uh, do you feel any of the push of larger federal dollars are able to secure housing where you might be losing avail- availability to housing? You haven't felt that push?
Not yet, no. And our, um, all of our housing programs, um, you have to have a social security number, is that right?
Well, you, they don't, commerce does not require it anymore.
Okay.
That we do with, um, our county programs.
Right, the county programs, you have to be a, a citizen to be able to access those funds.
You have to be part of the county as well.
Yeah.
Okay. And I do, I just listened to a whole newscast about how much trouble groups like yours were having because there's so many immigrants coming in and the federal dollars are supporting and they're able to out buy the rooms and out buy the houses. And then the locals, we're ending up with more homeless of our own because of it.
We haven't seen that here locally.
Tell me a little bit about plans, um, now that E rap's coming to an end. Um, what are you, have you polled all the people that are on it? How many of those are not, are they not gonna be able to continue? What's, what do you have for plans?
So in E rap, it was a two year time limit anyway, so we could pay back rent for them. We could pay forward rent for them, but it's still only two years worth of funding that they could receive. So a lot of those people, not all of them, received maximum benefit through that program. And then we have some other programs that are coming in that are kind of filling the gap, not in the same way. Um, E rap was, you know, fast and dirty, get this money out there, just do it, um, which was hard. Um, so it was very low barrier. And the programs that we have coming in to replace that are not as low barrier. But the, um, the emergency, the E H F one is a new one and that's meant to replace, um, the E rap, which did end.
The good thing with folks who, um, ex- received funds with E rap is a lot of them were then connected to other resources like Leslie was saying, to be able to provide, kind of lessen the barriers to paying rent ongoing. So, um, you know, a lot of folks will qualify for our food bank services a lot longer than they qualify for rental assistance or energy assistance because there's a higher percentage income. Um, and so sometimes those, those other barriers that were able to help, um, decrease will allow for folks to be able to pay their rent more consistently. And a lot of folks experienced, um, uh, employment, uh, challenges during the pandemic, um, or got behind because of the pandemic. And so some of those were also, um, circumstantial and not a long term challenge. So that's a little bit of the story as well as that some folks were, um, were able to get back on their feet with that, um, E rap funding.
And the last thing, um, and if you have any other questions, happy to answer those as well. I just wanted to give a quick update on the Goldendale Food Bank. Um, in the entirety of WAGAP's history, the Benjen branch has always served the most people. And in the last two months, the Goldendale branch has been serving more people than Benjen, which is a huge, huge jump. Um, so we are seeing a pretty significant increase in need in the Goldendale area that we had not seen in the past.
Question on that one, uh, Commissioner Zoller, uh, brought it to our attention, uh, through the, one of the senior advisory groups that she sits on. That they're, uh, losing some of their funding for food for the senior programs. And I told her that I sat on your food and securities board. Um, and that in our, our last conversation, it was kind of, uh, you know, you guys were being bombarded um, with money. So I, I told her to please reach out to you guys and, and see if, if you guys had anything extra in your bank that can go help there. And so anyway, she might be reaching out to.
Yeah, and there is a, a person that is designated for seniors already.
Right. And I know last time we, we split the money, that little allotment from the food bank to seniors and backpacks for kids. I just don't know where the budget is for any of those. That's why I was gonna have her. There may be no, um, avenue, uh, for increasing that senior, uh, portion. Maybe there is. I don't, I don't know. You guys are the experts.
And I know you work with Sharon, but do you work directly with Southwest Washington Aging and Disability with Mike Riordan? Because that's where I got the information.
Yes, one of our community health workers is part of that program.
It's a great program and that's where I'd heard it in our last meeting that there was some rearranging for the seniors and it was getting harder.
Yeah.
We'll have to keep an eye on it.
Yeah.
Make sure they're funded.
Yeah, and, um, do you have any further questions? So I was.
Probably.
I would just like to say, I think you are all doing an incredible job and what you do in the community. Um, while most people don't see it, um, everybody feels it and I can't thank you enough for your tireless work.
Thank you, thank you so much. I was gonna put Kiandra on the spot. Um, so every month in all of our programs, each program director writes a report for our board of directors. And in all of our housing programs, they always include a success story. So I was gonna ask Kiandra if you would mind sharing a success story from the last year from one of these programs. Cause that's my favorite part of the work that we do.
Um, I, we had a family who wasn't from the area but was relocating here. Um, who we actually had in the warming shelter, I believe for three months. Um, we were gonna put them on the Turning Point program and assist them for two years. Um, we actually didn't have to. Our Turning Point, uh, coordinator worked closely with them. They found employment and were able to afford a home on their own. Um, so just being available for them for case management without a program, uh, we were able to get them housed that way, find employment. They live here now. Um, they have four kids all enrolled in school. Keep the same employment they had when they got here. Um, that's our favorite one, just because it wasn't a, a family that we were familiar with or that is from the area who was able to come in, receive our services and stay permanently housed.
How long have they been housed now?
Um, so they came in the area, I believe December of last year. And we had them in the warming shelter until the beginning of March. And right, um, when that funding ended and we were having to let everyone know, like we need to come up with plans because the warming shelter is no longer available, they found housing, um, with employment, been housed ever since.
Wow, well done.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate the time today.
That's it? You got eleven more minutes?
That's it.
Tell us something else. Gotta be something else.
Update on the youth center.
Which one?
What is this drop in youth center thing you mentioned?
Yeah, so the, do you wanna speak to the drop in youth center?
Is that same thing you were asking?
Um, the one in White Salmon.
Okay, well.
The one in White Salmon is doing very well. They actually have a waiting list of kids now because the need is more than we can safely have in one place at one time. Um, they have twenty five to twenty seven kids every day on average. So sometimes they've had up to thirty five and that is chaos. But good chaos, cause they're there, they're having fun with their friends, they're playing games, they're gardening, they're playing outside. Um, but yeah, the youth center is being heavily utilized. We have two point five employees there right now.
Are you able to think about a new building and transition?
We are working with the City of White Salmon on that right now. Um, we had had some plans on maybe the Parks Building, but then things with the school district were in a bit of an upheaval. So that kind of got put aside, but we're still continuing work with the City of White Salmon. Uh, Mayor Marla has been heavily involved in that.
And has anybody looked at the old D S H S building? What's going on with it? Yeah, I know.
Can't see behind you, but.
They, they still have, D S H S still holds the lease and it goes through twenty twenty six, um, to my knowledge.
Does D H H S, uh, uh, have any plans to reopen down there or are they just occupying?
So we've met with them, they do not plan to reopen. According to them, it is a staffing issue. We have offered to host one of their people at our Benjen office one day a week or twice a month or however that works out. We're going through the technology things right now because they have very specific internet needs with privacy and things like that. Um, so that's still in the works. Um, we're hoping that we can get that to happen because, you know, we know people are having to travel up here. Um, we have hosted the mobile unit at our office in Benjen and that might be happening more often. But we're really hoping that we can get a person who's there on a regular basis so people know where and when they can go.
Yeah, even if it's just one day a week. Um, at least the locals would know they have something one day a week.
Yeah.
And it's kind of like us with our driver's licenses up here, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, the same idea.
Yeah. And then for the drop in youth center, that's for youth ages thirteen through twenty four. And they.
Calling twenty four youth now.
Young adults.
Young adult, young adult. Um, I didn't have everything figured out at twenty four. I, I wish I'd had a place to drop in and get some advice. Um, so they can drop in, they can just have a safe place to hang out, they could put together a resume. Um, Cassidy, who runs that program, is doing some cooking classes, so they're doing life skills there as well. If they need to do laundry, we have laundry available. If they need to shower, we have a shower available.
What is the, you know, I mean, you said the age limit or age group for that is thirteen to twenty four. What is the age group for the White Salmon Youth Center?
It is six through seventeen, but in the White Salmon Youth Center, kids generally stop coming when they are around thirteen years old because the main group in there is like third and fourth graders and by the time you hit thirteen, you. Yeah.
And I'm close enough to, what is it, learning ladder or whatever it is up here on the corner? That I'm hearing they could potentially close their doors this year, so that's gonna put even more of a heck of a burden on this community.
Yeah, well, we did get our childcare planning grant renewed. So that work is continuing. Um, Johanna Rowe is heading that up. We still have that a federal appropriation that's set aside. We're in talks with the school district. So all of that work is continuing to move forward so that we can hopefully address childcare needs.
Do you have any intention long term to do a Goldendale Youth Center like the one you're doing in White Salmon over there that has that sixteen to thirteen year old gap?
It depends on funding. So both the City of White Salmon and the City of Benjen provide funding for the youth center. So it's really something that the community has rallied around, which is how we're able to keep that open. We have not yet had the same thing here, but we haven't really tried because we haven't had the space. I could foresee that being something that we might do in the future, but there are a lot of things that would need to come together for us to be able to make that happen.
I did wanna make something clear too on the, uh, the drop in center here in Goldendale. Thirteen to twenty four is, is a large gap. That's not, um, meaning that that's the target age that can hang out there. It's for under eighteen, kids from thirteen to, um, under eighteen can hang out there as a safe place. It's not for the older youth or young adult.
They can receive services, but they don't hang out there.
Probably safer that way.
Yes, yeah, that was, that's, that's for.
So going back to your housing in, um, do you have wait lists? Um, what's, what's the need and what percentage of the need? Do you have wait lists? Um, what's, what's the need and what percentage of the need are you able to provide for right now?
Do you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, so, um, there are wait lists for permanent supportive housing and Turning Point Rapid Rehousing. So when we meet with clients, we do a coordinated assessment, uh, with them, which is like a two-page little questionnaire, um, asking about. Past experiences being homeless, past experiences with eviction, mental health. Um, and stuff like that. And the need is, the greater the score, the greater the need. And so that's what our wait lists are based off of. Um, so when we do that intake, whoever has the greatest. Um, score on that assessment will be the one that, that receives the services first. Um, and the waitlist usually go for funding. So right now, permanent supportive housing gets renewed in January. There's three people on the program currently. There's four on the waitlist. Um, that, and we're able to house, I believe. The two with the highest score, um, right off the bat. Two of the people currently on the program will fall off the program around the middle of the year. And then we can go ahead and replace them with the people that we still have on the waitlist.
What are you seeing? Uh, you probably have a better touch on the housing market than we do. Um, at least on the, um. Hate to call it lower-end housing, workforce housing, whatever you wanna call it, affordable housing, whatever terminology you wanna use. Um, what are you seeing on the local? Availability of that stock? I mean, has it went from a hundred homes to a hundred and ten? Has it went from a hundred to eighty? I mean, what, what's going on with our local, um, housing market? Um, because I guess I'd say I'm hearing that landlords aren't being landlords anymore. They're selling their houses. So I'm trying to confirm, I'm seeing a lot of head nods, so I must not be getting too bad of information. What percentage would you say you're, you're losing in that market? Do you know?
I don't know that we have a percentage, but the availability is decreasing. I can definitely say that. Um, and we also have an issue where a lot of the people who are willing to work with us. Are not doing the upkeep on the houses. So sometimes we can't even, you know, they might be like, sure, I have this house available. And then we go do an inspection and we're like, this is not livable. We can't put someone in here.
All that. That brings up the other question. Are you doing inspections? I mean, what happens when you? Uh, God, I probably shouldn't get into this. I'm gonna open a can of worms. Uh, what happens when you do an inspection and the house is not livable, but your only other option is to make the people in it homeless?
We do everything that we can to make it livable, working with the landlord, doing repairs. If we have to do them. We're gonna do everything that we can to keep that person housed.
As long as the landlord is amenable. Um, and I think, yeah, we're all talking about the same subject.
Yeah, we did recently have a situation like.
We, we recently had, um, we did an inspection for a client and face value. Everything was good. Cosmetically, everything was fine. Um, he moved in. That night sewage came up through his tub when he went to the bathroom and it was a whole mess of things. Um, his fridge. Ended up not working. And so we contacted the landlord and like, hey, we. Just place someone here. Unfortunately, it's not livable. We can't pay rent until things are fixed. And usually that's their, oh, okay. Yep. Well, first thing tomorrow morning. Gets taken care of. They don't wanna be out that money, especially when it's guaranteed money that they know they'll be receiving. So as long as we're like, hey, these needs, like these things need fixed or we're not gonna be able to, to pay, that, that helps.
Do you have anything you'd like to add as a board member?
No.
She's here for emotional support.
Exactly.
What's, what's the average amount that you're paying?
Um, so we stay betw- like within the HUD guidelines. Um. So like with ERAP, we could pay up to a hundred and fifty percent, um, the fair market rent. The other programs, we have to stay below the, or at the fair market rent. As long as we can, there are circumstances where. If the rent in the area is higher than that, we can justify it by finding housing that's similar to what our clients looking at. And go, well, all the other three-bedroom, one-bathroom. Homes in this area are also going for this amount and we can justify that. Um, permanent supportive housing, I believe the average rent is about nine hundred. Right now, but Turning Point, um, because they're families, they're in larger homes, I would say the average is about twelve, twelve hundred.
That was good information right there.
And so, so if they're able to pay thirty percent, are most people, most people working that are in both of those? Like at least one person in the household's working and so.
Yeah, and if they can't, uh, do thirty percent, we work with them to come up with an amount. We had one client who was only able to put twenty dollars towards their rent. But it was something to hold them accountable and kinda get them moving towards that thirty percent. Make them feel like they are, they are doing their part. Um, so sometimes it's as little as twenty. Um, we have one client, I believe, who pays like three hundred and something towards their rent. Um, and we don't count things like ABD as income because they only get like four hundred dollars a month.
ABD.
Um, age, blind, disabled, it's the cash benefits through, through DSHS.
And generally, that's what people are receiving while they're trying to get on social security or disability.
Right.
Okay, so it looks like you'll have two falling off. And in, uh, the last few years, the people that fall off, are they able to pick it up on their own or are they becoming homeless? Where, when they fall off, where are they?
We have a very low returning to homelessness rate. Um, we are held accountable by the Washington State Department of Commerce. And everything that we serve a client with gets put into something called HMIS, which is the Homeless Management Integrated System.
I didn't know it stood for something.
You guys stand way too many afternoons.
I honestly didn't.
But so every time a person exits the program, if they exit to homelessness, that is a huge mark against us. We do everything that we can to prevent that. So it, that is not very often. If someone's returning to homelessness, we have done literally everything.
It's almost by choice.
Right.
Uh, at that point.
Every.
You show enough, you, wow, you have enough programs here.
Yeah, and almost every client that enters the door, whether they're on a two-year program or not, receives a Section Eight application that we send in to Mid-Columbia Housing Authority. For them. And so like for permanent supportive housing, they fill out HUD applications as soon as they get on the program. So hopefully by the time their two years is up, they have a HUD voucher in hand or before their two years is up.
And then that allows us to move on and assist the next person.
So you're in a sense acting as that, that gap insurance coverage for HUD. And then most people are moving off and onto HUD and, and that's.
Potentially, but not all of them.
Not all.
Yeah.
Um, about how many, and this is Commissioner Christopher always wants to know, how many are in? Like White Salmon, the West Side versus Goldendale, the East Side, uh, that are in these programs, would you say? What's the distribution?
I had it all separated this morning. Um.
For you, but that's all I have.
Yeah.
We usually serve more in, on this side of the county. Um, I know, right off the top of my head, um. For our Hen program, we serve, I believe it was ten more households. Um, than what, than what, uh, Benjen area did. Benjen also doesn't offer the Turning Point Rapid Rehousing Program. Only our Goldendale office does, but that does cover all of Clickatac County. So they can live in Trout Lake, Bickleton, Glenwood, um, as long as it's in the county. Um, that, that works. Um, the rental assistance is usually pretty fair. Um, in terms of like ERAP, that's usually pretty equal.
Mm-hmm. And I would add to that, you know, with Turning Point Rapid Rehousing, because it's a family and it's a higher rent rate. Um, most of those families are in Goldendale because that's where you can actually find a unit that can support a family. And, um, not.
It's, it's rental prices out of the factor in there.
Yeah.
Um, and my data is from two thousand and twenty-two. And it goes by zip code, but ninety-six oh two is Appleton one. Uh, six one seven is Dallasport has six, six two zero, Goldendale has a hundred and one. Six two eight is Clickatac has eight. Six three five is Lyle has fifteen, six fifty is Trout Lake has four. Uh, six seven two, White Salmon, Snowden BZ has ten. Uh, six, seven, three, Wishrum has nine and three, five, six, Roosevelt, Bickleton has six.
And that, that to me shows you not by need, but by availability. By remember when Clickatac had twenty-eight. And now those owners have passed on. And so the houses.
From nine hundred to fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Priced out of the market.
Finding housing that's affordable for tenants, especially seniors with fixed income.
Well, that was the surprising part to me. The most surprising part in there was Trout Lake was four. And I'm like, how the heck do you find four?
Right.
That will accept nine hundred or eleven hundred dollars. Uh, in rent, in Trout Lake.
There's some old, really small cabins up in Trout Lake from, from.
Or something or.
Well, there, no, Trout Lake's a little too cold for that.
The airport duplex.
Yeah, sometimes we get landlords who they're right, right above that, that fair market. And when we explain the circumstance, they have no problem dropping it. And then other landlords are like, well, we can get a seasonal worker in here. Who can pay twice as much as what I'm asking already. So we'll just go that route too. So finding affordable rent, I would say is the biggest obstacle that we.
That's the other hard part. So the land. The, the landlord. If he is able to make. A gainful profit, he can re-insulate it, put new windows on, put a new roof on. If he's only making fifty or a hundred bucks a month in profit.
Right.
I don't know that you have the maintenance and the upkeep to keep it from getting derelict in ten years.
Well, and we do work really hard to maintain a good relationship with our landlords because they are such an important piece of the puzzle. And we do have funding that we can let them know is available. If the tenant causes damage. We can guarantee you that we can repair and pay you back for any sort of.
Do you guys work, um, let's call it senior programs? I've heard that there's senior programs out there that if seniors have a bad roof. And can't afford to put a new roof on, that there's funding out there to help them put a roof on. Do you guys do that kinda stuff?
We don't do that kind of stuff, but we can make a referral. Um, the Housing Authority has some programs like that as well. So we can make, we don't do that ourselves. We can make referrals to that program. There's also weatherization programs. We don't run it ourselves, but we have a contract with another agency who does. And so through our Energy Assistance Program, we make referrals to them every year.
I just don't know how many people even know those exist. Which is unfortunate.
So what can we do to help you?
Um, I think just, you know, continuing to make sure that people are aware of the services that are available and the work that we do. And just making sure that those funds that are available through the county continue to be available to us.
Well, the only way those funds, I could see those funds not being available to you is if the county wanted to set up its own department. To do what you're doing, and I don't see that happening anytime soon. With that, that fund balance is your fund balance. Um, I would just. Not knowing. Where recording fees are going in the future or what the governor dictates at what percentage you get or whatever, I would just, you know, with your budget. Spend frugally enough to make sure you have something next year. What you need.
Sustainability is.
Through as well. So, yeah, no, I was under the impression that everything we collected out of those recording fees. Already got passed on. I didn't realize we were taking them all. So, yeah, they're sitting in a fund somewhere.
I don't have any more chair.
It doesn't sound like anybody wants to set up their own department. So you're, you're, you're hired. Uh, continue on.
And thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you guys. And, uh, one thing I did wanna let you know, we talked about that resource guide at the meeting. Um, we will be bringing some. They're printing the new version right now, which is why I have not brought any up yet. I wanna make sure that. We have the most up-to-date version that's available for everyone.
I think that would be something that would be very good out in front of, well, everywhere, including our health department and anywhere else you feel.
And does it, I mean, have a little more detail? I went online, finally got the link and, you know, it was like. It just gave me the numbers. It was like a list, but I was like, I don't know who's the right person.
More detail in the guide. And then some of the agencies have a bigger blurb about, you know. Here's what we do. Here's who you should call. So there is more detail in the printed out guide.
Great.
Do you guys have phones too? You got the ability to give people a phone that don't have a phone?
Um, we can recommend them to a program, but we do not ourselves give out free phones. In the past, we, we do take donations of old cell phones and keep them on hand. For people who are fleeing domestic violence. Um, we've definitely given out donated cell phones and instances like that. But we don't have a program per se that gives out phones. We make a referral to another. There are free phones available through governments. But we ourselves do not handle that program.
But, but we will talk at the same time.
Does DSHS reroute to you?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't wanna assume.
Yeah, yeah, all of our community partners, you know, we all work really well together and we all refer as, as we can.
Okay.
And, you know, if someone comes into our office, though, e- even if we can't offer them assistance in, on that day. The one thing that we can do is we can listen to them, we can make referrals, we can, you know, walk them down to DSHS if that's what needs to happen. Um, people don't leave with nothing. That's the, that's the one, you know, motto that all of our offices have. Whether it was just that we were able to listen to them and their story, or we were able to make a referral or able to provide the service. They're not gonna leave empty-handed.
So you guys get the recording fee dollars. We get the affordable housing dollars that were now put in through our case pita board to decide where they go. But I just wanted to let you know that at least I am aware. Of the previous board's commitment to give you guys forty thousand dollars for the domestic violence. Uh, and I'm working on it.
Okay, that's.
Um, the, the hope is that we can get that through the case at PETA board by the first of the year.
Okay.
Uh, and get that off to you because I had just found out that you hadn't received it yet. Um, so it's my hope that we can fulfill the previous board's promise in a timely manner.
Thank you.
With that, if nobody has anything else, we'll let you go and see, use that extra eleven minutes I gave you. You want to leave an eleven more?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all and keep plugging away. Oh, yes, you too. I forgot to say Merry Christmas to everybody. I don't know what's politically correct these days. If I can say Merry Christmas or Happy Holidays or whatever, but I'll say it all and get in trouble.
Bye. It was, uh, Sandra J. O'Connor.
Oh, really?
Yes. Half-mast on the flags today for. Uh, recognition. She passed away.
I hadn't seen it.
When did she leave?
When did she leave?
Who replaced her? Yeah, I'm trying to figure it. Well, she was a Supreme Court Justice, right? Am I thinking the right Sandra Day O'Connor?
Yes.
Sandra Day O'Connor?
I thought she was.
I thought she was a Supreme Court Justice of Federal. Yeah, so I'm trying to re- think of which. Current Supreme Court Justice took her place. That had to have been ten, fifteen years.
Was it during Trump?
Recently.
Was it?
Yeah, cause she's one of the, it was one of the onlys to step down. Most other people pass away and.
Oh, so that must have been, um, Norshich or whatever.
Yeah, it's, um. What's her name? She's a female.
Yeah.
We're gonna get in trouble for not knowing all this national politics stuff off the top of our heads, so.
I just can't remember her name.
Alrighty, next item of business.
That's where I was going. Quick.
So, uh, the next item of business there is on our desk for our consideration. I had brought forward. Uh, memorandum authorizing all department heads to close their offices at noon on Friday, December twenty-second. And at three PM on Friday, December twenty-ninth. Uh, they're allowing employees to go home early for the Christmas and New Year's holidays. Now, the, the sticky widget of this is. If. Um, Christmas technically falls on a weekend, then that's a no-brainer and it's always pushed through. But as Christmas, as Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve is not on the Friday. Um. It so far has not been brought forward for consideration. I would like to bring it forward for consideration. Because I think it's just good policy. And that I think our employees have done. A very good job this year in difficult situations, have worked hard and deserve. Um, I guess say a little, a little Christmas spirit back. Um, so it would be my recommendation that this board, um. Does that and approves the memorandum for the holiday closure, but. Um, open to discussion.
Have you, since you brought this forward, have you reached out to the other electeds to see and make sure that they are okay with it? I mean, usually when we do this, um, it's something that we notice. Um, it's something that we post. We've, we talk about it a few weeks in advance. Um, I would just be. Um, I would just be concerned that if, you know, other electeds can't do that or are unwilling to do that. And we've done it, that other people or out county employees don't feel, you know, equal.
Well, I can tell you that. Uh, rumor from those that I've talked to is, um. Close as an hour ago during my lunch break, is they were going to be listening in with anticipation. Um, just like the rest of their employees to see what this board chooses to do. I have not heard any of them opposed to the idea.
So we didn't, we didn't let him know the discussion was being had.
Um, I don't know of anybody that he, that does know the discussions.
Does, does not or does?
Does not.
I have concerns about the timing. Um, there are a lot of people who plan their holiday already, um, taking vacation days. Um, so this is going to be. An accounting situation that we need to understand. If you've already applied for your vacation day and you're burning that day. And then we grant a free day. What happens with those people that have already pre-scheduled a vacation day off? That's going to take a little bit of, if it can be done, it's, I don't know how that functions, but it's going to take. A little bit of uh, reorganization on the accounting side of it. So I'd like to hear from them about.
Do your time card. You check the box whether you're using a vacation day or not a vacation day. And if they haven't had the day yet, they haven't checked the box yet. And they would just check the box differently.
And but I think because it was pre-planned, it's going to take a little more than just checking the box. It's already been set up. A- and I just need to know that. I don't want to throw a sticky wiggle at the people who do the accounting and the payroll. Um, and for me, this is a question that I think we want to make sure that we put on our agenda early in twenty twenty four. So we can look at timing. I know in the past, um. If we're bumping up against a holiday that say is on a Wednesday. Um, I've seen where they make arrangements, pre-make arrangement that all employees know that they'll be leaving by four and they have that. Little bit of travel time, or they give them the full day and they have travel time, plus that offices will be closed. Because we also have to consider the public. If we make that decision this week and we're the mainstay of all the permits and things. And I drove up here from White Salmon and then there's a notice on the door. Uh, that sorry, you drove all the way up here, but we decided we're going to give Friday off to everybody. Then you wouldn't be serving the public is a concern.
Just for clarification, I'm not asking that we give them the day off. I'm asking them to get a half day on Friday. And leave two hours early on New Year's Day. Or New Year's Friday.
Okay.
And the New Year's sometimes has been one hour and sometimes been two in the past, but it's never been.
And do we know what kind of notification we have to give? For. Closing the doors to the public. Do we have to print that in the paper ahead of time so people can plan? We don't.
I remember last year when, um, I was chair and we closed county offices. And I got a lot of heck from two individuals who are like, well, I was able to drive up there and you weren't open. And I didn't find out about it and they were pretty upset because they took time off of their day to drive up. So I absolutely know where you're coming from, Commissioner Zoller. Um, or is there any electeds online who would like to uh, chime in on this? Um, if the uh, from the other building? And whether or not you'd be able to let any of your staff go. Early, we should ask when they were in the office, in here this morning.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to jump on any grenades.
I'm pretty much feeling like they think it's within your authority. It's not up to their authority, so. But in the same regard, enough, if an elected did not want to close their office, that's their choice too. Um, we, we don't control their office. We control our departments. They can follow suit or they can do differently. That's up to the elect.
I am just trying to keep things fair and equitable amongst. The county staff, knowing that other electeds like the sheriff, that's not an option.
Or EMOS.
And just so we're clear, the policy has never been to uh, let people off early when, say. The holidays on a Monday, and so you have the whole weekend. We've never had taken that policy that, that anybody knows of.
We could only find the last two years when we looked. And this started, uh, when it was brought up at the West End Christmas party. And since then, I've been getting asked pretty regular from. Um, directors, electeds and employees wanting to know what's going on because they haven't heard anything.
Well, being a fan of good planning, um. I do, I do echo that for them that this should have brought, been brought up early in the season and we should be planning our calendar ahead. Um, and I have never seen it. I've been around a long time. I've never seen it where we give those types of days off. It's always. In due consideration of some travel time. So that if it's on a Wednesday, we give that day before. Uh, or even a couple hours early if it's like New Year's and, you know, the travel time for. The holiday season to get to the airport and some things for Christmas.
What do you recommend, Commissioner Zoller?
Um. Without. Um, thinking ahead. I'm not in favor of the change right now. I think we're in place, we're moving through what people have already planned for their holidays. We're only a few days out. Uh, and in interest of the public, I don't want to. Pull a fast one on a Friday and have the doors closed, even half day if somebody takes the chance and drives here from. From White Salmon to our facilities or drives in from Trout Lake to White Salmon. We've even faced that before. If it were pre-planned and posted and everybody knew ahead. I would feel much better saying, gee, I'm sorry, but that was posted, you know, six months out, three months out. Um, we all knew and we did let the public know that the building would not be open.
Well, I don't know that it's ever been posted three months out, six months out. It gets posted on the door and then it gets sent on a county news flash. Probably the week before the closure.
But we could do it early enough too. And we could have a, a little piece in the paper too, looking ahead.
Well, it's my recommendation to do it. Um, so it sounds like we have one yes, one no, and it's up to you, commissioners.
Um, I would say, I think we have time. Uh, I, I hear everything that Commissioner Zoller is saying and, and I. Based on last year's experience, recognize that. And I think it's, we're too late to do it for this week. Um, in case if, you know, the public does come, I think that we can definitely post the news flash. Um, posted on the, the doors for the New Year's holiday. Um, and I know a lot of people probably be traveling over that time as well. Um, and I think we could, and that's a probably a happy medium. If my seatmates are willing to do that and do the three o'clock on, um, the twenty, whatever that is. No, no, twenty nine, twenty nine.
Three PM on the twenty nine.
Three PM on the twenty nine.
Yeah, I think we could have due time, at least a little more lead time for that, that way.
Um, and I think we could still probably, oh, maybe not. Get it in front of the paper.
Maybe not, but at least we can do the county news flash.
Well, if you're. If you're, if you're opposed to. Uh, half day. This Friday for Christmas, are you, would you be opposed to three o'clock and just getting a couple hours? Or do you still have opposition to that?
You know, that was where I was going to start with, um, just with this discussion is doing three o'clock on both, but with, um. Uh, Commissioner Zoller's statement that, you know, we don't have time and we'd like to post it and give the public the, the time to not recognize that. That's why I said do it on the twenty ninth.
And Elise says she has time for the newspaper on the twenty ninth.
For the twenty ninth, yeah.
Well, I tried and we'll take what we can get and we'll do the twenty ninth then. Unless it snows. There also might be a threat of snow on the twenty second. I heard on my phone, there's a threat of snow, so. I can always use my unilateral authority as chairman. To close it at noon because there could be.
It's a blizzard.
Hold on to your horse. We'll see what the weather.
It wasn't supposed to snow until the twenty fourth. Has it moved, been pushed up?
I had seventy percent chance on Friday when I looked yesterday.
I'm looking right now.
I heard the twenty fourth is a pit. I like snow.
Forty degrees on Friday in Golden Dale, thirty one is the low. Yeah, Monday's thirty five.
I don't know, I might, I might, it could be snow, it could be ice, you know, I might be afraid and just shut her down. Okay, moving on. Unless we're still on this one.
Yep.
Uh, next item, board policies and procedures. The new of the new, of the new. Of the new new. And I did print an extra one of these, but. Julian wanted one, so I gave him one solid to print. Staff, another one, which I'm starting to date them since there's.
I have quite a few in my office.
Feel free to throw out all the old, I didn't even bring in the old.
Uh, and I gave you guys a.
It's in here.
Oh, you changed it. Oh, sorry.
Um, I added something, you added something.
What did you add?
You added. Um, rule three. Under interruptions. For my stress toys. Um, which we can have a discussion on and I added. A new rule. For consideration, rule number fourteen, conflict of interest. So. Uh, page one has still got a red spot because extensions of the regular business meeting. I need to check with the auditor and make sure that the date we have doesn't screw up paper, but that's why it's still. Um. The next item was rule three and the red. Is the wordage that Commissioner Anderson gave me. For adding, which. I find very. Challenging. To. Discipline for without being petty. Um, because someone sitting here with OCD could have a problem with your papers. And that could drive them crazy with all your papers. So it becomes this petty. Back and forth. But if you want to keep it in there to try to remove. My stress. Objects. Uh, I'm game. I will just let you know that I will probably be bringing a doctor's note. And then. We'll go that route. But. Board wants that wordage in there, the way the wording was presented to me, I will turn it black and move on.
Commissioner Zoller, how do you feel about the language?
I, I'm gonna just be painfully honest. I have a problem with the whole document. I, I do business a different way. I believe we were elected officials, um, that were elected for our maturity and our ability to handle a meeting. Um. Many of the boards and other things we've served on, we've had to go through very, very hard contentious meetings, some of them with the sheriff in the room because of them. Um. Our public comment is only three minutes and it gives the public their right to. Their freedom of speech and to voice what they think about situations in our county. And whether they're negative, whether they're positive, it's up to you as a commissioner to listen patiently. You do not have to comment back, that's your choice. If you choose to comment back, you should always make it positive, find something good in it. And you can choose after the fact to have a meeting with those people privately to work through your issues. And I believe that's what we were elected for. We were elected to serve the public. We were elected to be mature and kind and patient and move forward to the betterment of the entire county. And it was my desire, joining this board, to work through that as a board. I feel like this document. Is weaponized, it's weaponizing Robert's Rules of Order, it's adding caveats of punishments, it can be used. Uh, interpreted and used in so many different ways than what maybe the written language says. I think it's going to be more conflicts and resolution. Um, I would prefer we work through it as a board. Work our relationship out as a board, have workshops and work through these things personally, talking one-on-one. Rather than trying to print some rule that's going to try to put side rails and keep people in a box. I think you're going to. Add more contention with the public and you're going to add more contention between ourselves and. At some point, make it impossible to work together. That's just my opinion.
I, I would also add for the public who isn't looking at this, this is fourteen rules. And only one of them has anything to do with public comment.
Right.
These are rules for the board.
Correct.
To try to. Operate. In a more cohesive. Less. Uh. Chaotic. I don't know, contentious. Uh. If you in a way to be fair and open and transparent to the public. The, the public wants us to have rules. The public wants us to have a code of ethics. Uh, so that one commissioner, when they do transgress and do something stupid like I've done in the past. Um, there is something that can hold them accountable.
And like I said, coming into office, there are R C Ws that apply to us. That have never been applied, that we could lean on. And if one commissioner brought that forward, we could talk about that and work through it then. But creating a policy now at the county that not only we have to stay within. The next commissioners coming beyond us will have to stay within or readjust. I think it just creates this whole new talking point of back and forth, fiddle faddle. Uh. Rather than having a mature relationship between the three of us where we can sit down specifically, probably if there's problems in a workshop. To where we can just have open dialogue as adult commissioners and work through our differences and come to a working order that we respect each other and agree upon. Um, I have not given up on that. I, I see that we can do that. And this for me. Is, um. I would have to go through this document honestly, line by line. And reconstitute where I think it's putting side rails on me to where I won't be able to function as a commissioner. And have a proper dialogue to where somebody doesn't throw something at me and call a foul, and then I won't be able to speak. I believe in Robert's Rules of Order. I operate in, um. Proper discussion and I hope I've always offered back and forth conversation to where if. Uh, the arrow is pointing at you, the floor is yours and you can continue, or if the arrow is pointing at me, I can continue. And that's how we have our dialogue. Um. And I would much rather go forward in a working manner between the three of us to establish a working relationship that way. And recall, call responsibility on us, each as, uh, mature commissioners to do that. Rather than having somebody call a foul and like a flag goes out and the rules thrown at you and then you can't. You can't continue with what you were trying to explain or where you were trying to go. It's going to shortcut our dialogues. For sure, if it's weaponized and used against you.
Well, I think, well, I. But it also holds accountable somebody's. Dialogue, when they are using that dialogue to weaponize it against another member. And that member gets to do nothing about it. Why they're being attacked verbally. Uh, or accused of doing something they didn't do, or accused of saying something they didn't say. Um.
And I think those.
All legal under the current rules of the board, which are done.
Well, and I think those are skills that you develop. That you develop in debate. And. There are ways to work your way through those situations and if that one person doesn't cooperate and continues to. Cut the others off or add their comment in and doesn't allow. Debate back and forth, that's very obvious to the public and that's going to go towards whether this person still works as a commissioner. You have to have those skills as a commissioner because those are your skills that you take to Olympia with you. Those are your skills that you work with the tribes with you, those are your skills that you work on the boards. And to not be able to develop that between ourselves. Um. Shows that you may not be using that. Same situation in other places, which is. Um. Shows your support. And your level of supporting the county and working for the county to the good of the county and, and developing good. Relationships, whether they're contentious and bad and you can work your way through that. Without getting up and leaving the room or, or. Causing. Uh, just because somebody else in the public or on another board or even on this seat is contentious. You're responsible for your own reaction. You can end that dialogue immediately by your reaction. Or what you say or how you bring that other person around to have a civil conversation. And that's why this document's going to take me a long time to work through. Because I've been. Um, I feel it, it's very inflammatory in several places. And it goes against my working order.
And the transition?
Thank you. Um. And thank you to Commissioner Zoller for your uh frank discussion. I look forward to how you handle the chairmanship next year and I'll be voting for you to be the chair next year. Um, and I want to give you all of the tools in your toolbox that you feel that you need in order to manage the meeting. Because I know I made changes when I was chair and I know Commissioner Christopher's made changes. Um, while many of these uh rules of procedure. Totally fine with, um, I understand where you're coming from, that it could easily be weaponized. Um, as all Robert's Rules of Order can easily be weaponized. And has been in many um different um situations I've seen. Um, I want to make sure that if we do adopt something, you as chair do not feel like you're being boxed in in any way. Um, and so with you being the chair, I want to make sure that um you feel completely comfortable with any rules and procedures because you're the one who has to manage it. Um, and if you feel like you can't vote for this, I can be supportive of that. Um, if you want to wait and see how the first. Uh, half a month goes before adopting it, I'm totally fine with that as well. Um, and the other thing I always mention is, is that the rules can always be changed, uh, you have to be, they have to be read over two weeks' time and. And we can make those changes. Um. I always try to comport myself uh with the public, uh, with my seatmates, uh, with respect and decorum. Um, I have no issues with debate and I have no issues um with vigorous debate and. That's how you end up finding where the proper middle ground is, is where I always try to land. Um. And I think uh it behooves all of us to try to be on our best behavior because. We are all being recorded and it will always be used against us in the future. And um everything we say. Um. And so with that, you know, um, I hope that. We shouldn't need rules of procedure, we should all be polite and respectful towards one another. Um. And that's where we should, we should maintain. And so um I'm willing to give you all the time you need in order to uh become. Either say, I mean, you could be the first weekend and you'd be like, no, we need some rules, we need some rules real bad because I'm gonna start shocking people.
And the shocking may come first and if they can't comply then we'll draw rules. Um. And, and I, I do believe there's good pieces in here, I do believe eventually developing a policy isn't a bad thing. But as full and as big and as wide as this is, and we've already seen differences in it even today. With the language that Commissioner Anderson brought in, which I don't disagree with. Uh, but I, again. We should be able not to have to have those things, we should be operating in an adult fashion. Where we get along as a board and we represent the county and represent our people with respect. Uh, and we should bring that to the table when we're elected.
I, I would just like to add that the rules I brought forth to you were not rules that I created out of my head, they were rules that. Uh, were created from another organization, so they were not weaponized. Uh, until this board started tweaking them.
Um, and then there was a suggestion at one time that I, you know, when we were talking about the rules, that I look at another county and the rules they've. Instigated because of um. Over vigorous debate that they're having within their county commissioners, that's not the board I want to be. I don't want to have to have people go, hey, why don't you go watch that county Zoom because they're worse than us, look what's happening. Uh, I want to go the other way, I want to be able to be uh. Have, even if we're very, very different as people, uh, we all bring our diversity to the board, I want us to respect that, just like we respect the public that brings their diversity. And we're able to listen and we're able to find that common ground and move forward for the best of our county. And that's the only reason, that's the base reason we should start from. And if you start from that. You probably don't need much else for rules. But it's also recognizing um. The conversation and keeping it within those parameters yourself as an adult, you know, we all had those rules as children. If you can't say something nice, don't say anything at all, uh, you know, I could go through that list of things that. We should have learned as children and that's what we should be applying here. And we can keep working on this and we can keep it as a document, but there's a lot for me to do on this if I'm gonna move forward with. With this policy for commissioners.
So it sounds like uh we have two votes to table. This document and one that wants to continue it, so with that, I would. If that is the correct. Number. Um, I would, I would then assume the document is tabled. Um, and it can be brought back out of a drawer whenever somebody so chooses to remove it out of a drawer.
And, and that was my idea for December, I really wanted to work hard at things that were left on our plate from twenty twenty-three. And try to accomplish more and I did not want to lay more things on that take more brain time. Uh, looking up R C Ws, looking for things that. I want to apply that time and that work to things that we have left on our plate that we have not accomplished yet. As much as we can get as much as we can. Final and done in twenty twenty-three and start new in twenty twenty-four.
Well, that was my hope and my plan with these rules. I've been working on them so vigorously.
This month.
Be for them to be off of our.
But they came to us this month and we have things that have been on our agenda all year long.
Okay, so with that, we will table this and we will bring up all the items that you have on your agenda for the rest of our day.
Some things we're waiting on other places, short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals, I believe is dead on arrival. Um, as there are not two commissioners um. Uh, ready to instigate uh or initiate that policy.
And that again, this language that is stopping the good work because you said, I believe. And you pointed out too, and you don't know what my void vote is on short-term rentals, I just ask, where are we and how are we working on?
Just for clarification.
Okay.
Commissioner Anderson has recused himself.
Mm-hmm.
I am not voting to pass short-term rentals, what is currently drafted. We currently have a policy in place to legalize short-term rentals and that is going through a C U P process. That is where I'm willing to have that. So my point is, there's not two that want to change it. To the new. Short-term rental policy. Um, so I don't, I think it's dead on arrival, I could be wrong, I mean, he can unrecuse himself if he wants to vote with you on that. Um. Can be done.
We had other work too, working with our uh planning department, something that I'd asked for. Uh, were top pri- top five priorities for each of you, so when we get the new planning director. We can set him off on a mission right away rather than have a blank slate that he. Uh, he or she walks upstairs and has to decide what to do. The commissioners need to discuss what their top five priorities are for that department. So we give that person something to work with when they walk in the door.
Um.
And I don't know if you had a chance to.
Yep, my top five are C A O S N P. Uh, comprehensive plan and I'm going to be. Collecting the new document that was passed in Yakima County for their A D U's. And be bringing their policy forward. Um, hopefully to go also to our planning commission. Uh, to look over the A D U policy. That would be my, unless this board doesn't want to and then, but that was you my.
Got one more left, so that's four. Jake, have you thought of? What you think priorities should be beginning with upstairs?
I think the. Upstairs, the person needs to. Um, rather than throwing a whole bunch of stuff on their plate, that first month needs to be. Learning that position, if they come from another state, they need to understand Washington State R C Ws, they need to understand the differences where they came from. If they do come from another state and I think they need to work with staff and working on building that relationship for the first month or so. Um, before delving into the comprehensive plan update process. Um. And then also, you know, each one of these things that, that staff member is gonna have to. Um, do a lot of due diligence and background information and, and understanding. Um, on a lot of these um. Uh. Uh, different um things. Uh, with regards to the A D U, um, I would appreciate, um, I mean, I can do it myself, but if Commissioner Christopher has the A D U. Um, out what Yakima County passed, that would be great because we do have an A D U ordinance um already in place. Um, of course, I shouldn't say anything about it because it, it has the word S T R in it, so I should leave that alone.
Um, this is the, that comment didn't need to be made, did it not?
Are, are these yours or whose are these? The, the ones I'm looking at the, our agenda package, it, it says pending items.
Those are just pending items that I have typed in that.
Okay, that came from you, I didn't know if they came from one of us.
I may have asked a lease, what do we've got pending?
Right, and I know, I know the Commissioner Christopher usually has a long list on his, his um. Well, hopefully they're all, they're not long anymore. Um, the Title Twelve Road Standards, um, I definitely think we need to uh get that finalized and done. Um, the Clickatack County Public Corporation, uh, we talked a little bit about Casapita this morning, I think we can talk more about the, the public corporation. Um, whether or not to dissolve it. Um. Uh, and then uh the temperature of the courthouse and services building, personal heaters. Um, I think we need to talk with um. Uh. Public Works about, um, you mean, we were just talking about a potential for um. One or two vending machines to potentially start popping breakers and I know that in the old planning building, we used to pop breakers all the time. And um I hope when we design this, we, we have it designed so that we're not gonna be top popping a lot of breakers, but those are probably still twenty amp circuits. So we should probably talk to Public Works about that. Um. And I know everybody likes it different, you know, I. He could have it frozen in here and I, if it's frozen and you're freezing in your office, I think, you know, those little personal heaters. Um, are pretty efficient these days. Uh. And I wouldn't behoove you if you had one underneath your desk. Granted, you can always put on more clothes, but.
Yeah.
There is a cost to it.
I, I would also add that there's a cost to the personal heaters and there's also a fire risk. To the personal heaters, so I think it's a bad policy. Uh, for this county to openly. Uh, allow space heaters knowing the fire risk of them if somebody accidentally forgets to turn one off. Uh. So.
If we're talking, uh. Jake, I heard you bring up things on the list, to-do list for the commissioners in the future to. Take a look at and something I'd like to add that's been on my radar a couple of times that we have never. Uh, talked about or approached is court safety and I want to ensure that we have um. What we need in the court uh for the judges, what they need for safety and also structure safety. Um. Safety walls, safety glass, whatever we need to improve or upgrade those both courts or through the three courts, I'd like to make sure that. We just take a little assessment of it and take uh suggestions from the people who work there, what they'd like to have. For their own personal safety.
I'm adding it to the pending list.
And we have other issues that are on Public Works radar like the water facilities and different things, but I feel like all of those are on somebody's radar and they're taking care of them, the drinking water. Uh. Facilities, um, you know, they're, they're in the works and they're coming.
You know, being as it's right before Christmas, I think a good thing to do is to look at all of the good things that got done in a year. Um, we have passed a fair number of ordinances, we have passed a, a fair number of resolutions. Um. And a lot of good things have happened in Clickatack County this year. Um. Some that are more controversial than others and that's okay, controversy is not a bad thing. Um. But I think uh as a whole, the, the county is uh moving in a positive direction. Um, when we look at, you know, how much, how far we have come in one year with regards to behavioral health. And getting that building ready to go and getting everything set up and, and hopefully. Um, ready to start providing outpatient treatment services soon. Um, you know, our crisis response, um, everything that's happening. In the jail with regards to behavioral health services that were not happening for a long time. I mean, we can go through each and. Each and every department, whether new or longstanding and. And I think uh so often, um, I hear that, that, you know, there's a toxic work environment, there's a toxic pers- uh. Uh. Feeling around the county and. And I hate, hate hearing that because it's one of those things that it's so hard to fight against. Um, but what I can say is, is that um our other electives. Um, as well as our department heads have been doing an absolutely fantastic job, knowing that. We are moving into leaner, meaner times um for the county.
Well, and, and we may be economy-wise and economic development-wise, uh, but I have. Big hopes for twenty twenty-four, I see a lot of positive things on horizon, we have. Diverse economic developments starting to happen, uh, we have rearrangement of some other things that are getting it under control. Um. You're right, we should be very, very thankful to so many of the boards and so many of the departments, um, the airport. It's, it's flying, it's doing really well, it's coming forward, you know, we have hopes of the bridge. Uh, a ways out, but that's been a tremendous undertaking this year just to get the, the bi-state board. In place and get a lot of the money in place and get that to be a real plan rather than just a dream. Um. We have even rearranged our own county meetings, um. New agendas, new ways to do business, which I think our meetings are functioning better than they were in January. And I think we're going forward in the right way, so. Um. Public Works accomplished a lot of things this year. Their bucket list and their roads and. Um, now they're on to their next set of things and. And I don't see them struggling or trying to figure out how they're gonna get it done, they get it done and they even get the extra things done, they find a way. Like the guardrail on Canyon Road, when it came up that that was dangerous, they found a way and they got it done. So we do have to be thankful for all those departments.
And how nice is it to finally be able to shut down the tower program after all those years?
I didn't have that pain, so I, I got to.
There was a lot of millions of dollars spent building towers in Clickatack County and it's nice that we've got them built. And now we can move on to, you know, um. Just maintaining and I gotta say, you know, we can't say enough about the good stuff that. That Director King's doing and in picking up all the equipment as spares so that we don't have to replace it and start spending it all over again. Um, and that's just the, the culture of the county, it's that we find a way to get through it and. Yeah.
And with the budget changes, I'm really thankful for so many of the departments that have stepped up to the plate and said, no, we're not gonna replace that, we're going to do this. And they bring us alternative ideas to keep an eye on that dollar bill.
And I mean, we've got better financials than we've ever had, we've got better budgeting than.
We have an awesome budget book.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we had a great budget season. Less painful. We're able to have less meetings, less people spending their time waiting in in our offices explaining things and able to continue their work. But Jen had them set up so we could move through their budget, so that was really good.
So yeah, I agree, I think twenty 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 four is going to be a great year.
And our new I T department has done well.
Anything else?
Got our buildings and our parking lots done, we don't have a swimming pool this year. We had nowhere to park, we had a swimming pool last year.
It is amazing when you like start piecing it together over the course of a year, how much you actually get done. With good staff and good employees.
So next week, our agenda. Really small.
Um, I just, the one thing that I knew that we talked about potentially on the agenda was. Um, having the sheriff over that we were talking about doing this week and I don't know if we ever reached out.
Jen has talked to him, so I'll find out.
Okay, but maybe for for next Tuesday possibly.
You have a new. New toy.
So quiet in here.
And we all, we talk about boards, our first January meeting. Of who's assigned to what board, how we're gonna.
So I think that is a great conversation, if we may. You know, we we created. But three years ago now, a new way of filling all these boards and committees and everything and. You know, accepting applications and going through this process and. What we found is people don't like to apply and you have still have to go pull teeth after, you know, doing what the what of. Of course, we both heard about during our campaign.
They wanted and then you create what they wanted and they don't do it.
And then they don't do it, and so we've got three positions on the planning department. Um, we've got a number of other boards that need um, things to be filled. And we need to get these things operating, so I think.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll do that the first week of January then we.
Well, we need to, we need to accept the applications and see what applications we have. And if if they're already on it, they need to fill out the application so that at least we can say we've got an application from you.
Their term is expiring, do they have to fill out a new application or can we just? Renew their term?
We've done it both ways since we made the policy, so. The policy is they have to refill out the application, but we've not made them all. Do that.
When I was on boards, you would get a letter saying, your term is expiring, would you like to extend? I would write, sure, I'll serve and then I didn't have to. Or you could include the application.
I'm, I personally am fine with your boards just telling you. Um, and as long as this board doesn't have a problem with them. Um, or have somebody else in mind then redoing, which does bring up the question of. The planning seat for District Three. I am heavily leaning in favor of Matt Childs. Um, I guess before I have the conversations with either. Um, I want to know whether this board is going to support that decision. Uh, or oppose that decision before I go have conversations.
Think we need to wait and see if there's applications that come in when we do.
So we've also tried to only have people be on one board and Matt's on the Board of Adjustment and so.
He would be stepping down from the Board of Adjustments.
And he would probably have to step down as our appointee to F sec.
Sounds good too, sure he'd be fine with it.
I don't like that.
But we have to see if other applications come in or.
Well, but that's, that's the whole thing it goes down to is is. Is do you put it in the paper and do you advertise and try to get applications so that you're you're doing that broad based.
What's in the file.
Versus using what's just in the file versus just asking somebody, do you want to continue on? Because if the person says, yeah, I want to continue on. Well, then what about the people that have put in their applications or people that would put in their applications? This is the whole reason why we created the.
And we created the policy that the commissioner that oversees that seat. Uh, bring forwards a name which Commissioner Anderson then. Uh, amended that policy that the commissioner brings forward two names. Uh, for the board discussion, again, I would. Like to argue every time I make an appointment, the board has always seen fit that I bring forward two names and follow the policy. Uh, but when other appointments are made in other districts, they can only bring one and it's fine. Uh, so there's kind of a double standard going.
Do you have that policy?
This board needs me to bring forward two applications for them to make a decision. On whether they would support my choice, I would be more than happy to do so. I guess that's why I brought up this conversation is to see whether this board would support my decision. Or whether they would. Not support my decision before I made it.
I mean, technically, we don't, in in most instances, we don't bring forward the names. The applicant puts in an application and those get forwarded and then the. Then the then the 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 person from that district would then look over the names and make their a recommendation. Because in the end, it's it's the board. That's how I recall it.
Well, I just assumed since I think I, it was my assumption, I haven't seen the policy. That what happened was we let it out to the public that boards were open, we took in all the applications we could for everything. And then the staff brought us the applications for us to look through. And I hear you're saying that the person from that district can make. Recommendations from those in his district and then we.
The way it is written is the commissioner in that bring district brings forward two applications.
Two names out of the.
Out of the applications, he brings forward two applications.
Out of the.
For board's consideration and technically to this day, the board has not went against. The recommendation. Um, so we can see how that plays out, but I will be happy to bring forth two applications for this board to choose from.
If there is. Time in the newspaper, can we advertise once before the second and we still have time? In case there's people out there, I don't want to be unfair if we hear it from the public that we did not open it up.
Yeah, did you want to open it up specifically, if we do have time, do you want to open it up specifically for different appointments?
I think Planning Commission needs to be on it, Order of Adjustment needs to be on it.
Whoever has open seats.
Case of Pita needs to be on it. If you are accepting applications for Pita. I mean, we haven't before, but.
Wherever there's open seats that need to be filled.
That's. I know, but we don't do applications to the public, this board is handpicked to those people. In violation of its own policy.
I think the list, you guys tell me which ones we would want to advertise for?
I would, I, my personal opinion is is if we're doing an advertisement, we put all the different things that and then we put that. You know, applications need to be received by the first of the year.
And where to find the application.
And and follow follow what the. The rules in in that policy for that. If it says, I don't know if it says we need to advertise for two weeks or what it says, but whatever that is, let's follow that, put everything out there. See what application.
What is this board's opinion of a application that's been on file for two years? Or three years, the person still wants to serve, do you want them to refill out an application? Mister Child's application has been on file for the Planning Commission. Uh, since day one.
I remembered you guys having the conversation, I wasn't seated, but you had the conversation that the applications would just stay on file.
That's what I believed, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't going to get a red alert.
Um, and if nobody's up for the Board of Adjustment, um, I would at least include that because we do know that Commissioner Christopher would like to move someone from the Board of Adjustment in.
In case.
In case that happens.
Then we have somebody to replace.
I will make sure that I can oblige by the policy. Bring forth two names. For Planning Commission and for any other seats.
One of those changes to Planning Commission, then it would be an open one there, so if we can get some applications on file.
Again, it's the recommendation by the commissioner, it's not the commissioner decides. Um, the board of a whole decides on all of them.
And then the board appointments for commissioners. Do those change up in twenty twenty four?
Don't, don't get this on, I was like, no, you don't.
Uh, no, I'm talking about, uh. McCad, Columbia Gorge Affordable Housing, Senior Advisory Board.
The actual board will sit this period.
Oh, okay.
Some are full term. I think that all depends on the board you're on, some boards require it, but I think the. The understanding is is that you carry it for your term amongst the board members, but that's just a policy, like we can change it at any time. I know when I came on board. Like I took thing, I just didn't take all of Rex's stuff, Dan ended up taking.
So the previous board all had their set stuff for as long as they had it, the new guy came in, the new guy took over what the old guy had. Uh, when we came in, it was different and Dave only had, I want to say two boards. And the other guys had everything else and it was, no, this needs to be split evenly. And so we kind of went through the picking of the boards. Of what interested us or what was in our district or if the meetings were in our district. And picked boards, but if this board wants to. Uh, go back through that procedure and or remove any boards that I sit on from me sitting on them or appoint me. To any new boards of their choosing, they can more than happily do that.
I think it's it's good working order in my mind to stay on the boards that you're on because you. You make those relationships, you learn how that board functions, you start functioning with that on your calendar. To switch it up in a year, then I'd be relearning everywhere.
Right, but also learning, learning those other areas also helps, like you've learned a lot while on the airport board. That's been very valuable for you that you wouldn't have any idea if you hadn't have been on that board. So I understand the value of also switching uh, boards. Um, I guess the first question would be is is does anybody serve on any boards they wouldn't want to serve on again? Because the other thing that makes a big difference is if you're um, having to go to Olympia during a long session. Or if you're serving on, you know, one of the WASAC boards that take up a lot of time. Um, you know, like I'm on the timber caucuses, but it doesn't take up too much time and the the, you know, Columbia River Caucus, you know, I'm on all these different things that are state level. Um, and I know when I first came on, um, the first year I was like, I don't want to do a whole bunch of state stuff, I want to focus on the county. I don't want to focus on the state and as we uh, stay on the commission longer and longer, you get pulled more into state stuff.
You do.
Um, it's just, it's just the logical progression and I know Commissioner, you know, Soder was the chairman of WASAC at one point and. You know, served on and and when it was on N A C O board and so he was thinking that things were, you know, nationally, so the other two had to split up more. Um, but I guess from my perspective, you know, all the boards I'm certainly gone, I'm totally fine remaining on, but.
No, I'm fine, I just didn't know what the working order was with. What, how we function in the next year, because when I came in, I was handed my boards. Which is good, which they were Davids, which is good.
Were they all all Dave's or did we, I thought we. No, because you had, uh, you took the airport.
She adopted the airport, but she didn't give anything back when she took it, so she has one more than you do now.
Which some are not time consuming. Others take more time.
But I guess she doesn't have one more than you because you have Timber Caucus and Columbia River Caucus, so technically you still have one more than her.
It's not a, trust me, one board can take up more time than all the rest. I, what about you, Commissioner Christopher, are you good with all your boards or would you like McCad?
Uh, yeah, no thanks.
Well, that makes it for easy for staff for board appointments for at least.
We don't have to change any.
Discussion for Sheriff's Department or just a straight discussion?
Only me.
Update.
I think it would behoove this board if they're going to have questions on certain subjects that they give. The Sheriff's Office a heads up as to what those subjects are going to be so they can be prepared. Uh, and not gotcha'd. Uh, if you don't have specific items you're bringing here here for, which. Doesn't sound like the case, but I I think it would behoove us to. Be fair and allow them to prepare.
After your discussion with Jen, um, in that invite, would you um, politely ask, you know, to be prepared? Um, um, so that we can have an update on the twenty twenty three budget and where that ended up at with the Sheriff's Department? I mean, I just. Saw another truck went through and there were some trucks over there, so I was like, well, I just saw two trucks sitting there, do we have another one coming before the end of the year or where are we at?
We just had one of the bills.
Yeah, that's, I saw the one in the bills today, so that's what I was. Right, that comes out of V N R. But I didn't know, because remember, like, there was, we were, we were out a year, like, they were supposed to show up and then they never showed up. And I don't know if those three were the ones that were. And then did we pay for them now versus back then and how does that work with the budget? Right, we're paying for them now, but we'd had it budgeted in V R and R and it was in the budget, but then we didn't expend it. And so was it then added to this year's budget to expend that on top of the new? And then do we have any more that we need to worry about that aren't getting delivered that are according to that regular? Okay. And then the next question is, is, you know, they show up, but then you've got to pay for all the additionals, you know, on top of it. And is that going to be in this year or is that going to hit next year's budget and did we, did we? Prepare for that?
That's a good question, I know it was in this year's budget, as per being rolled over, I'm not sure.
Right, because I know, you know, last, I think last year it was, they said they'd take them two or three months to get the. All the lights and everything installed by day wireless and everything, so it'd be good to know, like, where are we at?
Is that a relation to Jay?
That's Jay's daughter.
That I thought.
What about it, what's this?
Oh, do you see that as conflict?
I don't know the process they go through.
That is the Cypress Awards for scholarships.
And I don't know what their vetting process is.
Well, it, it wouldn't be up to Cypress to decide whether that's a conflict, it's up to this board. To decide whether there's a conflict and did they disclose a conflict? To the rest of the Planning Commission.
I don't know what.
It should minimum. Have a phone call that says, let's try not to do that again. Because it doesn't look good to the public when the public's pointing that out to me.
So I would say it's actually not up to our board, it's up to their board. And during the meeting, if you're dealing with that, um, then that person would bring it up that that occurred. But I don't know anything that that board is bringing up that that's on their radar where this would make any bit of a difference.
If that board feels they've had a conflict. Would be my, I would. Would be my, I would like that board. To make that discussion.
That was the one thing I told you I had to look into from.
And.
Information I had received that might be a potential issue going forward and that was, that was it.
Oh, the morning when you're like, I planned to do this this morning, but.
We were talking about appointments and I said I still needed to look into. Uh, an accusation before I was ready to.
Is that per, that person's not up for reappointment though, is it? We just appointed him. Last year. I thought.
You wanted to add them to, uh, Board of Adjustments as well. You wanted to have them set on two boards.
And for me, that involves the school district. And education and where this student. If you just don't apply names anywhere, where this student is. In their academic field, how hard they're working, what do they deserve as a student?
I don't disagree with that at all.
And to. You know, I would wanna go through and compare that with, um. These types of things that have been given from review savings, these types of things that have been given from the hospital, um, what. What does that look like everywhere else? Because for me, it's more about the student. And separating that out from anything personal so that you don't damage that student for the work that they've done that they deserve.
No, no, but, but where you're also going with that is, and most of these, the school is the one who determines the scholarship. Not the company. So then of course there would be no conflict if the school did.
That's what happens. Fine, I haven't, that.
Yeah, but, but again, though, yeah.
And that's where I think I'm feeling the difference in all of those that I've noted before. It's the school and the school board that makes those decisions. Based off of what the teachers.
But I mean, honestly, I, I'm not worried about it because there's nothing that's in front of the Planning Commission that would have any impact on that unless you go really, really deep.
And they may not even know that connection.
Well, I don't think they knew the connection is my point and I don't know that. That did not have anything to do with the biggest piece of information that was in front of the planning commission this year. I would think it would. But, um, some of us have different opinions.
Well, and also legally, what constitutes a conflict of interest?
There's an RCW.
And I would be very careful wielding that. I would ask a legal opinion maybe first and ask the school how they administer the.
I don't think the school administers.
We don't wanna assume.
Just passing on from the constituents that gave it to me, it didn't look. Correct. I've done that as sensitively as I can and I think you have to admit, been pretty sensitive.
I was. Very well done, sir.
So I just wanna make sure there's no, I'm gunning for something.
And I also appreciate you using the, the heart and not the, uh, rubber excuse today.
I've had, actually had both. They started bouncing this one earlier. And then, um. Anyway, that's what I was gonna check on, on that, but.
And I would ask legal counsel first.
Die there. Um, as long as I'm not making another appointment, which it doesn't sound like I am. Or am I?
What?
Were you still thinking of trying to appoint the two boards?
No.
Okay, then it is what it is.
And we need to get this changed. Sweet. Okay, just wanna make sure I'm not throwing these out before anybody's.
Okay, cool.
Um, and I did hear back, um, from an ex staffer that said, we have always done, um, for Christmas, the. Twelve o'clock on Christmas Eve and three o'clock on New Year's Eve, as far back as seventeen years. We have never, and that's only on the day, we've never done it like the weekend before. Uh, there's nowhere for me to say.
Pass things along, people wanna look at them.
So, but I, I hope everybody has a very safe and happy, um, Christmas and New Year's, but we'll see y'all before then. So I guess going back through this, um. Do, are we gonna ask the Public Works to talk about personal heaters? I guess I'm not too, my personal opinion, I'm not too worried about the fire danger being that this is whole building is. Fireproofed and built to the current most sta- most recent standards. As well as, uh, personal heaters unless they're bringing in one from like the nineteen nineties, the nineteen eighties. I'm not too worried about them. Um, starting fires, cause they all have the knock kickover and everything else.
I would, um. Argue as the person that sits on the risk board. Uh, it is an absolute public safety issue. Uh, especially if you're not making sure that they plug them into, they're not plugging them into surge protectors, which are the. Absolute worst and cause probably sixty percent of those fires in our community. Uh, over the winter. So I, I hope you. Are willing to listen to expert opinion. From Public Works and Emergency Management and, and before you make a decision, that's all I'm asking.
I am always willing to listen to expert opinion. Um, but add that to the, the discussion, hopefully for next Tuesday for Jeff. Uh, accessory dwelling units, uh, Commissioner Christopher, are you gonna send us, uh, what Yakima passed?
I have to dig it up first. They want our Title Twelve Road stuff, so. I'm probably gonna get a copy of our Title Twelve Road. Uh, red line and probably just mail that up there to them. Um, with a little supporting document on it.
Is theirs passed or is it proposed?
Their ADU is done, is my understanding.
Okay. Should be able to find it.
And I have, right, and I have, um. Some ideas of what it says based off, you know, hearsay, but I have not read it. Um, so I don't know technically how big of a. Uh, obviously if the Planning Commission has a big issue with it, it will die slow and miserable death. Uh, if they don't have a big issue with it, I don't know that it would be super time constraining. Uh, ensuring a, uh, critical areas ordinance for.
Uh, I know we were, we were talking about the. ADU with regards to the STRs, cause it's included in there and then doing it all with the comp plan update for the ADUs. Are you thinking about doing it separately, the ADU ordinance?
I personally would like to make any changes that can be made. To the comp plan, just like we did with the interim solar zoning. Because I personally have about zero faith that the comp plan will ever get updated. Uh, so any changes I can make before then would be fine with me. And then if the comp plan gets updated, it can incorporate any changes the board took. Because I guess I'd say it's just like the solar. If I wait for the comp plan to get done. Which. I've been pushing since day one. I don't know that it gets done.
Working on the comp plan, I think doing parts and pieces that we can do is very helpful. And it's gonna save us money with a consultant in the end with the bigger package. And if there are smaller items that we can incorporate into the comp plan later, that helps move things forward like the ADU, I would rather do them separate.
Um.
If it makes sense.
So the, we all like to think of the comp plan, you know, as this big, ugly, nasty thing and. There are portions within the comp plan that are big, ugly and nasty, and that's the, the zoning map. And the zoning designations, because that has a enormous impact in people's wealth and personal wealth. And so you get. Both sides of that spectrum. But in terms of the comp plan, in terms of setting.
I was bouncing again, I'm sorry.
In terms of, uh. The, uh, the comp plan and setting policies, um, goals, all that. Um, I don't see that as being as nearly as difficult because it doesn't affect anyone's actual. Values of their property or what they can and can't do on their property. It's a guiding principles document that when you move forward with. The zoning regulation or other things, um, that actually then you revert back to and say, well, this is a part of it, you know, like.
Right.
Like, you know, we did the ten year economic development strategy, which, you know, compared to our comp plan, that thing is. Far and above more complex, more information, more anything that goes into it. Of, you know, the policies, procedures, directions and all that. And it went through the whole process and had a lot of, you know, input from. Ports and County, you know, other agencies. And it, and it was really successful. I mean, it took, it took a couple of years, I think. Um, but I think with the comp plan, we, we could make a lot of progress. And I think if we have a, a, the right. Planning Director, it's something that we don't have to go out and spend three hundred thousand dollars in. You know, a consultant to, to write that comp plan. When you start making changes to zoning ordinances and all that, um. I still don't think you have to spend that kind of money on, um, the, um. Consultant, I think the consultants primarily come in because they help you with process. And they help you get through the CIPA and because when you start writing these things up, you know. It has far reaching changes and, but it's non-project specific and then you get appealed because. You didn't look at, you know, all of the cumulative impacts analysis and you're like, well, there's no way to tell. How does that work? So. Both sides of that.
That's, that's kinda where I'm coming from with like the ADU thing. I mean, it, each one of them is gonna get its own CIPA. Um, but when we get into comp plan, we're gonna get Hatfield and McCoy in this room. Because the developers want to extend, let's call it the urban growth boundary. I know it is. Around Goldendale to allow potentially five acre parcels. To, um, help create affordable housing. But you're also gonna have landowners that want to go back. In, in now outlaw twenty acre parcels to make a hundred and sixty acres. There's gonna be a lot of contentious discussions and that's just one of them. That I think this comp plan thing is gonna be a lot more longer drawn out process. That if we can get some of these other things. Um, done in the meantime, at least we got them done. And then they can just be incorporated. Uh, when we get to all those contentious things that technically we don't even know if we can get one passed. Or if we're gonna get challenged in the court again for another decade. And, and so. It's one of those, am I willing to wait? To see something that hasn't been able to get done in forever and. No, I, I hope it does, but I'd still like to be able to work. And get some good things done. Uh, while we're hoping that that one.
Do you see the argument occurring when we're updating the comp plan? Or do you see the argument occurring when we're updating the zoning?
I, I think it's going to be argued during the comp plan. Because the comp plan is going to be the guiding document of the zoning. And all of the. Power players. In this county know that. And they are going to be trying to influence the wording of the comp plan. Or of the comp plan so that you can't. Do what they don't want you to do in the zone.
Okay, moving on, um, it's STRs, are you guys tabling that?
I have nothing further to add on STRs.
Where currently is it? So I'm updated. Is it out for legal review? Where is it?
I think it's tabled while we were working on the Title Twelve. Is at that point I said I needed Title Twelve to, uh, feel comfortable about the fire. Uh, egress, uh, from the properties. Uh, because I currently feel quite comfortable. With the fire egress from the company or from the CUPs. Because I believe the Board of Adjustment takes that into account. Um, so I needed to feel comfortable, which is why I tried to put the wording in the Title Twelve document.
So there's no way for you to move forward on the STR and revisit it?
Nope.
And since I'm the only one on STR, then it's a dead subject if we, um. Let me revisit that document and have a further conversation with you next week and see. Some suggestion, the STR document and see if there's a way that we have a workaround on it.
I'm good.
A compromise, there's no.
Nope.
Not gonna talk about STRs.
Currently I am comfortable where we are. I could change it a later date, but currently I am comfortable.
So what does that mean at where we are? Tell me.
Which is, we currently have a policy in place to allow STRs to be legal. Um, they just have to get a CUP.
Uh, can you, uh, direct anyone to where that's written in policy or county code?
Yeah, we don't. That, that's wide open if the owner chooses to get one.
Okay, moving on, Title Twelve Road, um, hopefully we will, um.
Yeah, we have a process moving.
Yeah, hopefully we'll get that done. Um, and then Clicktack County Public Corporation. Uh, what answers do you guys need, whether or not we dissolve that or not dissolve?
You're talking the first one that was giving loans essentially, right?
The, they did.
About the Casey Pita one.
Not Casey Pita, this is the Clicktack County Public Corporation.
I don't see a purpose for it going forward. I understand the previous boards. It doesn't hurt to leave it there because you might find a use for it twenty years from now. Um. So part of me is also fine with leaving it the way it is, cause a future board might find a use for it twenty years from now. And it's easier to just have our once a year meeting where we pass the gavel. And then close the meeting. Um, so I'm fine with leaving it the way it is if you think a future board will need it for something. But I'm also, obviously nobody has since nineteen ninety five. Um, actually, was it before that?
Uh, I believe they were still paying off those in ninety eight.
Okay, close to them. So it hasn't been used in twenty years-ish. Um, that I would be fine with closing it out, um, as well. Um, I think it. I, and I would be leaning towards closing it up.
Well, it's my understanding, uh, from past dealings, I believe that. The board and, uh, those who worked with it migrated from that first one to the Casey Pita and. And work started within Casey Pita and this languished and we didn't use it for anything for years and years and years. And we have funds there that could. Roll to something else now and be used rather than just languishing in an account for someday maybe, um.
Think that we use those dollars up until twenty eighteen actually from that account. And it was being used when Commissioner Soder was traveling. And I don't know if that was travel that he, that could only be used for that. I don't.
I think they were trying to eat a fund balance without having to do a transfer. So they were calling his Naco and whatnot Economic Development. Versus out of Commissioners.
Right, so that's, I just don't know.
Technically, we can continue doing the same thing.
Do you see any to keep it there, Jenny?
Uh, you know, I hate to dissolve something when I don't know everything about it. I don't know if we ever were to do revenue bonds in the future for a reason, if we would need to have it in place. And I'd hate to have to build a new one.
Where I'm at.
And so I also, um.
It's not gonna hurt to table it for a year and talk about it.
Other than the public pressure that we have too many corporations that we're not using.
That's.
Two people.
That's our business.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, you know, if we table it for a year and let it sit, it isn't gonna hurt anything. And we could even pick it up six months from now and decide we've decided to. Close it out or we've decided we've investigated it enough that we might use it for something. Economy's changing, everything's changing. We may need to use that corporation again. We don't know. I don't know enough about creating those bonds.
I don't know, but I also don't know that we can't. Take the money that's in there and put it over in the general and just leave the corporation with a zero balance. Which should be very easily to audit, cause it has zero balance. No money in, no money out. Uh, less audit problems. Now it's just a document that sits on the shelf. And we pass a gavel. It doesn't hurt anybody. Um, it's not tied up any taxpayer resources.
Takes four minutes a year.
And it takes four minutes a year and you have justification. And it takes four minutes a year and you have justification for leaving.
Okay.
If you transfer.
And then some of my other question, I'd want to know the answer is can Casey Peta do all of the same things that it can do? And if Casey Peta could, then I'd have no problem with it.
Hmm, well, we give ourselves some time to look at that. Can, see if Casey Peta can do what that.
I mean, we are going to have to make a decision though, because.
Yeah.
It's been brought up, you know, to the state auditor, state auditor wants to know what we're doing. We've made a, made a determination what we're doing in Casey Peta, so we do need to make a determination at least. And so my statement would be is if we're not going to dissolve it right now, that at least what we do is. We put in, you know, with the state auditor's office so that it shows that that money's. And we're not using any of it, it's getting audited.
Are you okay with registering everything with the state auditor? And then transferring that money into the general, so it has a zero fund balance going forward? So it's less chance of audit problems?
Is long, well, we're not, I, we don't have a prob, chance of audit problems if we're not spending.
Well, it's just hours of work, so you're paying for those hours.
I think there was.
Nothing to audit, there's less work.
I think there was a question about where we can transfer, does that money have to go to economic development?
Well, I think they figured out that, I think that was part of the presentation, we can get a double check.
Okay.
But that's what I heard in the presentation is that's why it hasn't been closed down in the past.
Okay.
When we've asked, because they didn't know where the dollars are, there were strings or ties or whatever. And they found out there isn't, and it can just go in the general.
Okay.
Let's say we can get a second.
Yeah.
This is just, this is just on the to do pending items list to get hammered out. And as long as we have a plan on each one of them, I'm fine. Or if the plan is to table, I'm fine with that too.
Uh, so that was very messy. So um, I guess I would say, I believe the board and correct me if I'm wrong. Wants another auditor discussion. It wants to hear potential consequences of just removing the funds, but leaving it open. And how big of a pain would that?
Yeah, confirmation from the auditor that we can move those funds and where we can.
Yeah, we just got to make sure we have a plan and that's what the auditor wants to.
Okay.
Um, that's all that's on our pending item list, does anybody else have anything else on it? If not, I can give you at least a little bit of update on another board pending thing.
Uh, okay. You have any kind of an ETA, anything on tips for country living?
Hmm.
Or a goal in mind?
How so? Question for the, the board, um, tips for my country living is available on the website. Um, I know when I worked in the planning department, they, we had printed it out, just a few of them. Um, and if people called about it, we would refer them to the website. I know that um, you wanted to condense it without the pictures, uh, which on the down, like a.
Are small brochures, yeah.
But uh, you know, with the.
Still listening, but not correct.
Anyway, so uh, so yeah, I mean, we have it on the website, it just is one of those more.
Yeah, that was my concern with budgets is why do we want to be printing ten thousand dollars worth of brochures? To hand out to people and they sit in a big box and then they go with the public and go home and they read it once and get thrown away.
Right, that's the thing is it's available on the website and I know that I'm trying to refer people to the website. We didn't have that available.
And they used to have, uh, back in the day, what was like a rack card. A little bit on the front, a little bit on the back, you were done and it went in a rack. And then it migrated to the big. Much.
So this was my goal, is to get back to this. Uh, but it's like at my first page, says firewise program weeds burn ban. In other words, I'm going to guess when I wrote that, I didn't find them anywhere in this document. So I think what happened is this document. Which to me is still the end goal, something small, portable, a little more professional, goes in a rack. Realtors can give it out when somebody buys a home. Went around to each department to add things that weren't in here, burn ban, weed, uh, whatever. And it became what you now have on the website, that's this thick of a full page, maybe jammy. Um, to me, the end goal is uh, weeding out.
My cock.
I don't know where to go.
Is weeding out, not weeds, but anything that we can shorten and condense to still. I don't care if it's sticker and it's like Reader's Digest, that TV guide that I know I'm talking old technology, you know, thick TV guide was. Versus this little thing, I like the fact that it's small and foldable and not full pages of paper. It, but I'm okay with it being thicker, I just want it looking professional enough that we can print them. Uh, and give them to realtors and get, put them in the planning department and everybody get in the permit and get one. That was my end.
And my concern is cost. That was why I was condensing was how much do you really want to spend that? They sit in a box, they're given out, they're gone through once and they're thrown away.
I think there's cost and, and you're probably speaking, I, well, I'll speak for myself.
Three thousand dollars.
I wouldn't doubt it if I'm the cheapest person in this earth. Uh, but I also.
Oh, I think that's actually a pretty, pretty fair assess- assessment that we're all kind of.
We're all cheap, but, but, but I'm really cheap. Um, I look at it as a uh, community benefit. If we can educate one person to, hey, there's herds in the road when I'm driving my car, I should probably slow down. Because that probably means there's cattle drive.
Does one online have all of this? Or it's condensed?
I think it has that and more, because like I said, the one online was that one.
We can.
That went to, it went to public health work done, which I think might be our new solid waste person. So it got added to and upgraded and then never turned into this. I think what we have could do this, it would just be a thicker document. But in the same regard, if we spend five grand, I'm hearing it from realtors all the time, at least on my side of the counter. I mean, you guys maybe don't. But, you know, people shooting guns, people having cattle drives, people barking dogs, people. If, if we can educate people and save some neighbor on neighbor conflict. Or car versus cattle drive conflict, what's three thousand dollars? We spend more than that flushing the toilet. Um, it's budget dust in this budget. Um, and it's, it, to me, it's health, safety and welfare. Uh, so I, you know.
So how long, Leon, for you and I, maybe once a week to work on it and together?
If we just convert what we have into a little.
As I said, I'd be real curious if you take what you have.
First of March.
And then.
First of March.
Instead of having it on full page paper, turn it sideways, so it can be folded much. Kind of scenario and then send that to a printer to see what that costs to give us. Five hundred of them and go from there. If we have to print five hundred a year and give them out to realtors. Again, we spend far more money than that on these. Uh, in the public is clamoring for them.
Okay, March first.
Okay, I'll follow.
No, we need to set a date, so we.
We thought we had it where we wanted it and then you got here, so you want to change it, which is fine. I, I want to make sure everybody's happy, I just want to make sure we get it done too.
I remember twenty fifteen, I think we went through this, we had a box of them in economic development, they were. Hmm, old, old. And we went through the process, we sent it around to all of the different um, uh. Directors, um, every, everybody got it, everybody put in their. Uh, made their changes, we went through, I thought we printed them at that time.
Um, well, they used to be about this wide. I, I've got a sample.
Is this wide?
No, it was, it was half that size, yeah.
Oh, smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah, card stock, left card stock style there for a while, yeah, I think I remember seeing one of those.
That was old.
From the eighties or nineties in the conservation.
For one specific realtor, it was made. Who shall remain nameless, oh, and here comes.
Oh, and there's somebody who remembers all this.
Your compliance director, come forward.
No, 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 Bill Dean.
It's Sunday, isn't that what it's called?
Bill, no, you said code.
Oh, did I, oh, that was a slip of the.
Yes, it was.
Eight twenty-three of eighteen is the last revised date I have at, yes.
We started in fifteen, I think.
We started in fifteen, I think. Um, at this point is when we ended it off to health to fine tune the photos and layouts. And then I, Aaron gave that back, I want to say probably in two thousand nineteen.
Um, you got those all funny daddy wrong.
I don't remember that part exactly.
Office, I was very uh, interested in this, so me and you both worked on it.
And what we were trying to do was make it similar to that old original one.
And so Aaron stopped working on it.
But have current information and add things like the level one, two, three evaluation.
And they finished it on Wednesday, July thirteenth to twenty twenty-two. And that's where it's.
Okay.
That's where it's been. Um, since we started and then they took it and they had a graphics person kind of thing that could tweak all that stuff.
Right, right.
Not us.
Someone in their office.
Uh huh, so.
So that's the last I had.
Made its rounds, it doesn't need another go around, it's going around the department, it's already had.
So I didn't know if I needed to give you guys more copies of the last I saw of it.
Of the twenty eighteen?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the one I just shared.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Which I can leave to the staff and put my name on it.
Yeah. And I can make.
Well, that's close enough.
And those have the updates, so that works good.
Well, yeah, but the one, the file you guys have, the big one has the updated of the updated.
Right, see, and I don't, we have three things.
I still don't have that health department one. Um, well, we can get that from them.
It was.
Yeah, exactly.
An email form.
Yeah, the ones that.
I would like the health department one just formatted to be on paper stock like this.
Because there's a.
Paper stock like this.
Yes, there's a version.
See how many pages, I mean, it might be ripper ready to go, it might have double the pages that this one does, but this is still.
And then we'll get cost on it, what it costs.
Yeah.
Okay, see, and I haven't seen that one, so.
It's got great photos.
Right, right.
It's, it looks professional, this looks like a nineteen sixty-five, Clicky Town County government document.
Yeah, you know, I mean, so that's why we.
My hope for those was that people would get them when they get their new home buyer's packet.
Right.
People can leave them on a desk when they're doing a short term rental, we'd be able to educate some people and hopefully save lives.
It started as eight and a half by eleven and then got converted into this format. But the eight and a half eleven.
Went on the.
That's what was given to health to work with, and so it's.
I would like to see it go back to.
Right, which it never got done.
Oh, here you go, it's foldable.
Exactly, it would be printed into that.
Yeah.
Print on the short side.
So how many pages is that? And then you'd have to double that by, that wouldn't be double because it's front and backs.
Exactly.
Be the same number of pages as that is.
So you're talking ten?
So really, it's the same sized document roughly.
Oh, third fund.
Yeah.
Right, so it's just gonna be like this.
Yeah, you would be front and back.
And just check all the phone.
So thirty-five would be fifteen pages essentially, uh, of front and backs.
Not much bigger, thicker, whatever.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, four, five, six. And this is twelve, so it'd be three more pages than this one roughly. I think that's adequate, I don't even know if there's something that you're missing in there.
Check the numbers, phone numbers and everything, make sure they're all.
Yeah, give it a last double check and.
And I had spoken with Bonds in the DOWs, like this was. In probably twenty nineteen or twenty twenty or twenty-one or twenty-two, somewhere around there. So it's been a few years, um, and it was four to six thousand at that point. Depend like, and that was like, I think for a thousand.
Good.
Um, but that was using glossy paper on the outside and, I mean, we can adjust that price.
So I'd be curious to send them that packet and this idea and say, what's the cost to convert that to this?
Yeah, I'm trying to, it was, it was Bonds and.
There's a printer in white, Sam.
Yeah, there was a couple, the new ones, that we had just, you know, generally talked to. Um, just to get in that.
Shop around.
Right. But yeah, I just figured I'd let you know at least the part that I knew. But it looks like from what you showed that it's this format, so, yeah.
Why don't we work on just checking all the addresses and phone numbers and then get a estimate from somewhere and see what we're. To, I have a couple.
Because if I remember, I could complain stuff wasn't in here and it's in the new one.
Oh, okay, yeah, I don't think this, I just pretty much went off the very.
Yeah.
Original one and then like updated the miles of roads with public works and a few things like.
Yeah, no, I know that was, that was one of my first projects before I took on the pictures in the hallway. Uh, so it'd be nice to finish that project.
And since I had started the ball rolling, I figured I'd at least.
And I appreciate that.
Come down and share.
Share your knowledge base.
Positive, it's only been a few years, five, but.
Governor, you don't work fast to print some papers. Well, that's good, that speeds that whole thing up.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Off that I can think of. Oh, oh, let me look at my, that was my list. Uh, website. Or the. Your trade agreements, uh. Uh, that's it.
All right, Mr. Chairman, having nothing else before the board. Um, I would move that we adjourn the regular meeting and I would note that the commissioners will be participating in interviews on KLCK radio on Thursday, December twenty-first. At eight oh five AM, um, I would also note that there are no scheduled workshops on Thursday, the twenty-first.
And I will second.
Okay, motion in the second, and for discussion, I'm going to assume each commissioner is going to be calling into the phone line using their phone.
Yep.
Um, not having any further discussion, all those favor rejoining, say hi.
Hi.
All right, motion passed.